We're ready to go, 7:30. Let's roll. Thank you for getting here on time. This is great. Having informed by the town clerk that we have a quorum, again, thank you very much for your prompt attendance here tonight. The meeting will now come to order. So, yes, pardon me. We're missing a key component, I just noticed. Some selectmen. Well, let's all pretend we don't notice when they walk in. How about that? They'll be discreet. I'll bring Jeopardy music next year. Now, I think we're ready to start. So, good evening, everyone. My name is Bob Hiss and I'm proud to be your town moderator. Welcome to Town Meeting, 2017. Will the membership please stand and remain standing until requested to take a seat? So, tonight, we have with us student members of the Milton High School Chorus, who will be singing our national anthem. Let me introduce you to the Milton, the members of the Milton High School Chorus.
One, two. Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light? When so proudly we hailed up the twilight's last gleaming, whose bright stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming, and the rockets' red glare, the boughs were singing: "E, prove to the night that our flag was still there; oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?"
They're gonna sing all of the articles tonight. If now you can stay standing and in keeping with our tradition, we'll start our meeting with the pledge of allegiance to the flag, so please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing. The meeting will now open with an invocation by the Reverend Stephen P. Zoukas of St. Elizabeth's Church in Milton. I very much appreciate Reverend Zoukas taking some time from his busy schedule to join us. Sir, if you will.
God of justice and mercy, thank you for the gift of freedom and the opportunity to serve the people of our town. I ask you to bless all the elected officials and all who volunteer their time and energy for the benefit of our community. Help us to act with character and conviction. Help us to listen with understanding and goodwill. Help us to speak with charity and restraint. Give us a spirit of service. Remind us that we are stewards of your authority. Guide us to be the leaders your people need. Help us see the humanity and dignity of those who disagree with us, and to treat all persons, no matter how weak or poor, with the reverence your creation deserves. And finally, Father, renew us with the strength of your presence and the joy of helping to build a community worthy of the human person. We ask this as your sons and daughters, confident in your goodness and love.
Thank you Reverend Zoukas. Also, I'm sad to report that since our last meeting, we have lost two active Town Meeting Members. Ms. Janet Christensen, who was a graduate of Milton High, worked actively in the farmer's market, and a Town Meeting Member from Precinct 6 since 2007. And Mr. Thomas F. Kelly, served on the Firespace Needs Committee and was an active Town Meeting Member since 2002. If we could all observe a moment of silence for our fellow Town Meeting Members. Thank you. Now, will all the Town Meeting Members please remain standing in order that the Town Clerk may give them their oath of office? And again, please remain standing until requested to take a seat.
If you could all raise your right hand, and at the end just say, "I do," do you solemnly swear to faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all duties incumbent upon you as Town Meeting Members? To be of true faith and allegiance to, and uphold and defend, the Constitution of the United States of America, the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and the bylaws of the town of Milton, and to fairly and equitably execute the laws thereof, within the extent of your authority and jurisdiction, so help you God. Thank you. Thank you.
So, now, will all the new Town Meeting Members please remain standing while the rest of you please have a seat? So, if you look around, I think there are, Town Clerk mentioned, 28 new Members this year. If you'll all join me, thank you.[471.12][471.12](Applause) Thank you. Please be seated and welcome to Town Meeting. We look forward to your service. At this point, I'd like to recognize State Senator Walter Timmeltie. Actually, before I do, well, may I hold off for just a moment? We did have a number of Town Meeting Members that retired after many years of service. I thought I'd just read their names. So, Peter Jackson, who was a Planning Board Member and Town Meeting Member since 2002, 15 years. We had Mary McNamara, who moved out of Town Government Study Committee and a Town Meeting Member since '91 for 25 years. Catherine Haynes Dunphy, Board of Selectmen, Town Meeting Member since '91, 25 years. William J. Fitzgerald, Town Meeting Member since 1980, 37 years. James F. Dunphy, Town Meeting Member since 1980, 37 years. And I think the reigning champ, James G. Mullin Jr., who was Town Clerk for 36 years, a Selectman for 15, a school committee for eight, and a Town and Meeting Member since 1973 for 44 years. So, thank them all very much.[536.04][536.04](Applause) Now, Senator Timmeltie, would you join me up here in the podium, say a few words?
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Walt Timmeltie, Precinct 8. First of all, congratulations to all newly-elected Town Meeting Members and Boardholders. You are holding strong and continuing a wonderful tradition of Town Meeting in New England. It is our exercise in democracy, and I thank you for that, and congratulations to all our newly-elected Boardholders. Would Tom Hurley please come forward? You're gonna embarrass you. Your seats aren't as good, Tom, as they used to be the past six years. Absolutely, and I'm sure you're gonna enjoy it. Tom, thank you so much for everything you've done for this town.
Thank you.
Chairman of the Warrant Committee and so many other roles in town, and you've served at the apex of town government as one of our Selectmen for six years, most notably as a chairman. And you've done it with great distinction and dedication to the town, and for that, we are all extremely grateful for what you've done for all of us here in this town. And we are very happy for you that you're gonna be able to enjoy a little bit of downtime. Now, of course, as I mentioned a couple of weeks ago at a retirement party for our distinguished outgoing school committee members, there's always time for comeback. But, but for now, we have a citation honoring you, and I know Representative Driscoll, my friend and colleague, has done the same in the House, and it states, "Carmouth, Massachusetts State Senate official citation, be it known that the Massachusetts State Senate hereby extends its congratulations to Tom Hurley in recognition of your six years of dedicated service to the town of Milton as a member of the Board of Selectmen. And be it further known that the Massachusetts Senate extends its best wishes for continued success that this citation be duly signed by the President of the Senate and attested to it a copy thereof transmitted by the Clerk of the Senate. It has been signed by our Senate President Stanley C. Rosenberg, attested to by our Senate Clerk William F. Welch, offered by myself, Walt Timmeltie, on this first day of May 2017, although given the weather, you would never know that it's May 1st."
And now, I'd like to recognize Representative Bill Driscoll.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Tom, don't go too far. I have a citation for you as well. Hi, Bill Driscoll Jr., your new state Brown. I won't go through the whole citation, but I do wanna let you know the entire membership extends its very best wishes and expresses hope for the future and good fortune and success in continuing all your endeavors. So, thank you for your service in Milton.
Thank you very much, Bill.[735.13][735.13](Applause)
Thank you, Moderator Hiss. Good evening, Madam Chair Conlon, Board of Selectmen, Town Meeting Members. Representative Colaney is unable to attend tonight. He sends his best wishes. And my official spokesperson, Baby Will, it's past his bedtime, so he says hello as well, he wanted to be here. A special hello and congratulations to all the new Town Meeting Members tonight. Mr. Moderator, I appreciate the opportunity to speak, and I'll be brief because I know you have a full agenda ahead of you. It's been just over 100 days, 117 to be exact, since I began serving as State Representative for most of the town of Milton. The past four months has been a great honor, and I am privileged to have the opportunity to work for you on Beacon Hill as your advocate. I must thank Senator Timmeltie and Representative Colaney for their support in my transition to becoming a full-time legislator. I have a couple of rapid-fire updates for you of what I've been up to on the Hill. I remain deeply committed to the fight for airplane traffic equity. The Board of Selectmen and the appointed reps, such as Cindy Christensen and Andy Schmidt, among others, are working tirelessly to advance desperately needed airplane navigation changes for the region. I continue to work with Rep. Colaney, State Senator Timmeltie, and the rest of Milton's elected delegation at all levels of government, from Selectmen all the way up to our UNIS Senators in Washington. Because this fight is a marathon and not a sprint, unfortunately, it needs a whole community approach to succeed. I'll continue to be supportive in any way I can for this effort. And I'd also like to remind everyone here tonight, continue to file your complaints with Massport whenever there's a notice of disruption overhead. The noise complaint data helps make the case for our elected officials that the current navigation patterns need to change. Those of us that are in conversations with Massport and the FAA cannot do this without you. And even if you are not directly affected, please know that other community members are deeply, and they and I need you to regularly file complaints via web or phone. I file proposals legislation seeking a new study to be done on the health and ecology of the Blue Hills Forest. The study is aimed at providing some answers to assist in the long-term management of the reservation, so they can be enjoyed by our community for generations to come. With advocacy and encouragement from the Friends of Blue Hills and a Better Blue Hills Coalition, Milton State Health Delegation along with state reps from Canton and Quincy have been liaising with DCR to explore ways to improve the Blue Hills trail crossings, making them safer for pedestrians crossing Routes 28 and 138. In March, Mary Ann Sullivan of the Milton Council on Aging alerted me that the MBTA Ride Paratransit Service was in danger of being cut. This would affect about 600 Milton residents and, including 39 other communities in total, stood to lose this important and critical mobility lifeline. I appeared with senior advocates at the MBTA Fiscal Control and Management Board, and I'm pleased to report that the cuts to the ride service are off the table. In closing, and most importantly, I want to make sure that you know that my door is always open to you and your neighbors that you represent. My office is dedicated to ensuring that all questions and concerns that we receive are addressed, and I welcome the chance to meet with you, the residents, in person, which is why I regularly hold office hours in the district. I encourage anyone who's curious and would like to learn more about what's going on at the State House to visit these office hours. Give us a call or send me an email, and we'll set up a meeting. My business cards will be available on the table where you picked up materials tonight, if you'd like to pick one up. My official website is billdriscolljr.com and is updated regularly. It's a great place to learn about the various legislation initiatives and other activities week to week that I and my staff are focused on for you. Thank you for the honor of electing me as your State Representative. Holding this office is a great responsibility, and I'm grateful for the opportunity to make our community a better place. I'm excited to work for Milton in the next 100 days and beyond. Thank you very much, and good luck tonight.[983.32][983.32](Applause)
I'd like to recognize for a moment Katie Conlon, the Chair of the Board of Selectmen, with a couple of comments.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening, Town Meeting Members. We have two new faces at the Selectmen's Table tonight. New Selectman Richard Wells, who retired last June after 32 years of service to the town, including nine as police chief. Please join us in welcoming our new Selectman, Richard Wells.[1023.13][1023.13](Applause) We also have a new Town Administrator since we last met. Michael Dennehy is the former Commissioner of Public Works for the City of Boston. He came on board just as the annual budget season was getting underway in earnest. That would be difficult enough in an ordinary year, but it's even harder in an override year when two budgets are being prepared. Mike's off to a very strong start, working with the Warrant Committee and the Department Heads to prepare the budget, signing a community compact with the Lieutenant Governor relating to the town's development of a multi-year vehicle plan and vehicle maintenance and replacement plan. He's serving already on a Mass Department of Transportation Working Group that's reviewing some Chapter 90 issues for the roads, and he's already proposed some cost-saving measures, such as the LED streetlight replacement program that we'll be considering under Article 5 tonight. And he's done all of this while getting to know just a few hundred Town Employees and many, many, many civic organizations. So, please join the Board of Selectmen in welcoming our new Town Administrator, Michael We have three people that we'd like to recognize tonight and to thank for their service to the town. First one is Tom Hurley, who's already made his way to the back of the room. I can hear him laughing from here. Tom gave 12 years of volunteer service to Milton, six years on the Warrant Committee, two of them as Chair, and two terms on the Board of Selectmen. Tom's sole reason for serving was his desire to give something back to the town of Milton. In every vote and every action he took as a Selectman, Tom was guided by what he believed to be in the town of Milton's best interest. Probably everyone in this room knows that Tom brought to the Board his experience as an accountant and his understanding of municipal finance. He represented the Board of Selectmen on the Capitol Committee, which he co-chaired, and he seemed to relish every opportunity he got to return to the Carol Blute Room and discuss the budget with the Warrant Committee. But Tom Hurley was so much more than just the Board's numbers guy. Less well-known, but no less important than his financial expertise, is Tom's commitment to and his strong advocacy for increasing affordable housing in Milton. Tom was the Board's first designee to the Affordable Housing Trust, and he helped move our production plan, our housing production plan, forward. His desire to add more affordable housing units in Milton guided Tom's service on the Master Plan Committee and is the reason he pushed, ultimately unsuccessfully, for the adoption of the Community Preservation Act. But Tom never gave up. He saw incremental progress on housing whenever and wherever an opportunity arose. His efforts will bear fruit over the next few years, as the Affordable Housing Trust continues to accumulate funds and expand its work. Tom had a hand in everything, from the town farm, to the Strong Town Administrator legislation, to the Hendry's Project, to Stormwater, to the Ford Ranch Road Development. He has been a leader who thinks long-term and outside the box, and rolls up his sleeves to get the job done. To paraphrase a decades-old quotation often attributed to Robert Kennedy, "Tom Hurley didn't just see things as they are and ask why. Tom really did think things that never were and ask why not." The best example of this would be Article 37 of the May 2015 Annual Town Meeting, the brainchild of Tom Hurley and a creative mechanism for financing Milton's next big capital projects, the fire stations and the DPW facility. He proposed to hold level the otherwise declining debt exclusion revenue. It was so creative an idea that the legislature had never seen it before and shipped it off to the Department of Revenue for analysis, and Tom spent many hours on the phone with Town Council and others and the DOR. And just last week, what we're now calling Tom's Bill made it out of third reading in the Senate, and we're hoping that it will be on its way very soon to being signed. We will miss Tom's contributions to the Board of Selectmen, but we have his cell phone number, and we will make use of it. Thank you, Tom, for your dedication to the town of Milton, your creative thinking, your Lastly, the Board of Selectmen asks you tonight to join us in recognizing two long-term, dedicated volunteers who stepped down from their posts during the past year after decades of distinguished service. Precinct 9 Town Meeting Member Joseph Murphy has resigned from the Milton Housing Authority after 31 years of service. Joe was elected in 1986 to a one-year term, and then to six consecutive five-year terms. For three decades, Joe worked hard to advance the Housing Authority's mission of providing safe and affordable housing for low and moderate income families. Joe was so well-respected by his colleagues that they recently voted to name the community room at Miller Avenue in honor of Joe. Joe's volunteer service extended beyond the Housing Authority. Somehow, he found extra time to devote to the school department, serving as a member of the very hard-working school building committee and this facility's subcommittee of the school committee. Joe and his wife, Anne, are longtime Town Meeting Members. I don't know if they're here tonight, but please join us in thanking Joe Murphy for 31 years of service as an elected member of the Milton Housing Authority.[1438.51][1438.51](Applause) And lastly, within the past year, Catherine Haynes Dunphy stepped down as Milton's representative to the Massachusetts Water Resources Authority's Advisory Board after 22 years of service, including 14 as Chair. The Advisory Board's role is to represent the ratepayers who live in the MWRA's 60-member communities, to advocate for their interests, and to ensure that the MWRA spends the ratepayers' money prudently. It's not a high-profile organization, but its work is critical to two important services that local government provides: clean water and sewer service. Kathy is the Advisory Board's longest-serving chairman. A strong advocate for ratepayers, Kathy played a key role in formulating many of the Advisory Boards and the MWRA's policies and initiatives, including in the area of infrastructure. Kathy also represented the Advisory Board on the Water Supply Protection Trust. In Milton, Kathy chaired the Warrant Committee from 1990 to 1992 and became a Town Meeting Member in 1991. In 1993, she became the first woman elected to the Board of Selectmen and went on to serve two terms. She has also served on the Board of Directors at Fuller Village. Like Tom Hurley and Joe Murphy, Kathy Dunphy epitomizes what it means to be a public servant and a civic-minded resident. Please join the Board of Selectmen in thanking Catherine Haynes Dunphy for all that she has given to the town of Milton for more than three decades.[1564.82][1564.82](Applause)
And Katie, I have a question. Is there a birthday at your table, any chance? A birthday at your table?
Yes.
I think there is.
Yes, there is, Mr. Bob.
Anyone feel like wishing Mr. David Burns, our Selectman, a happy birthday?[1603.51][1603.51](Laughter/Applause) There's no secrets, no secrets in public life. You may have read that eight student athletes from Milton High School recently competed at the New Balance National Indoor Track Meet in New York City. I'd like to recognize one of the coaches, Tom Shaw, for a minute to share their good news. Coach Shaw?
It's been a great honor and pleasure to be coaching here at Milton over the years, and these last few years have been some extraordinary years. Coaching here, the student athletes have really raised the bar of expectations for this school and for what the town expects of them as, you know, representing the town of Milton, no longer just in the local Bay State Conference, but in the state, regionally and nationally. And these girls, this past indoor track season, went to the National Indoor Championships and finished the distance smithy relay, finished fourth in the nation, and the four-by-mile relay finished second in the nation. I just want to add to that, that, you know, wherever they go, they're wearing their Milton red with them, and, you know, they've been great ambassadors of the town. They have great character, both as a competitor and as a human being, and they always show grace and humility with their opponents. They're always quick to congratulate their opponents on their accomplishments, and, you know, they're just great humans in general. And wherever we go, I always have other coaches from other programs come up to me and compliment me on just how great our athletes are as people, as well as athletes, and they're always so jealous of me to have the opportunity to coach them. And so, I just want you to know that these girls have been fantastic ambassadors of the town of Milton, and people around the region know about them, both as great athletes and great people, and we're going to continue that tradition that they've started here at Milton.[1786.13][1786.13](Applause) And we're going to continue that tradition that they've started here at Milton.
And as you may know, a New York theater group called Pearl d'Amour, if I'm pronouncing it correctly, has been working with many residents and town and school officials on a project called Milton Reflecting. It's held a number of events in town throughout the year. And I'd like to recognize Ron Bell, a Milton resident, to make a brief announcement about the play. It's in the flyer that you received. Mr. Bell?
Good evening. Okay, we could do better than that. Good evening. You know, this is my first Town Meeting, and I'm really glad to be here. After 20 years, yeah, after 20 years of living here, some of you may remember me working as a senior advisor to Governor Deval Patrick. And I didn't have to knock on any doors, because he was the paper boy, and we heard that story over and over again. So I'm actually really glad to be a part of the meeting tonight. I have a very important announcement. As mentioned, I'm the lead organizing, lead organizer for Milton Reflecting, which is a year-long project that has brought people from all walks of life together, black, white, Latino, Asian, Muslim, Christian, Jew, and everything in between, you name it, to tell stories to build race relations. And some of you know what's been going on in our country has not been good. But lo and behold, the same thing has gone on in Massachusetts, and we need to stop that. Can I get an amen from someone? Can I get a woo-woo? I just want to make sure I'm in the right room. So Milton Reflecting, we have a play coming up on May 17th, 18th, 19th, actually, May 17th, 18th, 20th, and 21st. And we're having a play about five towns in Milton. One including Milton, Massachusetts, North Carolina, Louisiana, Wisconsin, and Oregon. Of course, we are the best, Milton, right? But we do have our challenges. And so there needs to be some more diversity in this Town Meeting. Can I get an amen? Ah, okay. So make sure you're still with me now. So this play by Pearl d'Amour is a woman by the name of Katie Pearl who's come from Brooklyn, New York. It's a multimedia live performance. They use audio interviews, artifacts, and dynamic projected video of the sky to connect five towns named Milton across the United States. There are 24 Milton's in the country, and again, we are the best. It's a multiracial cast of three actors, speaking and singing and sharing their way into a shared, a shared introductory, a shared national question. What does it mean to be an American? And does an American community actually exist? Again, make sure you get flyers. I'll leave some out front. I have ticket space unlimited. It's on May 17th, 18th, 20th, 21st at the Milton Public Library. The room only holds 75. First come, first served. And because you are wonderful Miltonians, you get a free ticket. God bless you, and thank you for having me.
Having been advised by the Town Clerk that a majority of Town Meeting Members are in attendance, I hereby declare that a quorum is present for the transaction of business. Before proceeding with the business of the meeting, however, there are certain preliminary matters to be taken up. First, permission has been requested for certain members and personnel of the School Committee, the Planning Board, the Board of Health and other boards, committees, and departments who are not Town Meeting Members to sit on the floor with other members of their respective boards, committees, and departments, upon the understanding, of course, that they will not vote. Hearing no objection from the body, such permission will be and hereby is accorded. Second, permission is granted to Milton Cablevision to televise these proceedings. Also, please note that there is two-side aisle microphones here, over here, as well as the center, with three seats reserved at the front for those waiting to be recognized to speak. So these front rows for the new Town Meeting Members. Thirdly, I will now review briefly, particularly for the benefit of the new Town Meeting Members, some of the procedural rules for the conduct of the meeting, which unless there is objection will be the rules for the conduct of the meeting. First, Town Meeting Members are required to check in with the Town Clerk and to be seated in the lower part of the auditorium, which is demarcated and reserved for Town Meeting Members. Town citizens and others who are not Town Meeting Members are required to be seated in the upper part of the auditorium past the red rail. Second, any Town Meeting Member wishing to speak to any article or pending related matter will first go to the nearest microphone, and upon being recognized by the moderator will identify herself or himself by giving his or her name and precinct. If you have not been recognized by the moderator, you're not permitted to speak to the meeting. On occasion, members will informally alert the moderator that they desire to be recognized to speak on a certain article. And while your moderator will attempt to remember who desires to be recognized on any article, please be advised that the only way in which a member can be sure to be recognized is to go to a microphone and wait to be recognized. Third, by longstanding tradition, while any other registered voter of the town who is not a Town Meeting Member may not vote here at Town Meeting, he or she may be recognized to address Town Meeting, providing that the voter in advance of the particular session has obtained permission from the moderator, and that has in fact occurred for this Town Meeting. Fourth, any person having a monetary or equitable interest in or who is employed as an attorney or otherwise by another person interested in any matter under discussion shall disclose the fact of his or her interest or employment before speaking thereon. Fifth, with reference to each article in the warrant, the recommendations of the Warrant Committee shall ordinarily be considered to have been presented in the form of a motion by the chairperson, which has been seconded by the secretary or other member of the Warrant Committee, who is a Town Meeting Member. Unless the moderator otherwise expressly states at the time, the question to be voted on under each article will usually be whether or not to accept the recommendation of the Warrant Committee. In other words, generally, the recommendation of the Warrant Committee is the main motion pending under the article. In the event that the Warrant Committee recommends a no vote on an article, the question will be presented as a vote on the motion made and seconded to approve the article. Members will vote yes if they favor the article and no if they oppose the article as recommended by the Warrant Committee. Sixth, pursuant to chapter, excuse me, Section Four of Chapter Two of the town's bylaws, the moderator requires that all substantive or complex motions be reduced to writing and presented to the moderator before submission to the meeting. Thank you to you members who have done that. Seventh, by longstanding tradition, Town Meeting Time, a Handbook of Parliamentary Law, Third Edition, which I have right here. In addition to the bylaws of the town of Milton and the laws of the Commonwealth of Mass will be the rules of order for this meeting. Eighth, any member desiring to show slides, make a PowerPoint presentation, or any other visual material before the meeting must make appropriate arrangements and inform the moderator, and will display them up on the big screen. Ninth, members are urged to obtain all information needed by them prior to the meeting. However, by tradition, the moderator will recognize any Town Meeting Member for the purpose of requesting additional information relevant to the matter under consideration. All such requests must be directed solely to the moderator, who will attempt to ascertain the most appropriate official who should answer such quick inquiry. Answers will not be provided while the member still has the floor in order to prevent the temptation to cross-examine the person providing the information, which is not permitted. However, the moderator will separately recognize a member once for the purpose of posing a follow-up question. Sometimes the information is not available, or is not immediately available, and the request for information will simply not be fulfilled. Tenth, when it is announced by the moderator that the meeting will proceed to the vote, debate will be closed, and the pending question will be put to the Town Meeting. Eleventh, upon a question being put to the Town Meeting, the moderator will first determine by voice vote the sense of the meeting. If the moderator is unable to decide by the sound of the voices or if his announcement of the vote is doubted by seven Town Meeting Members standing in their place, the moderator shall then proceed to have a standing vote on the question. If the vote is further doubted by 25 Town Meeting Members standing in their places, then there will be a roll call of the meeting, with the Town Clerk calling the name of each Town Meeting Member in alphabetical order. And each Town Meeting Member, upon his/her name being called, shall rise in place and answer yes, no, or abstain. Twelfth, no vote shall be reconsidered at the same meeting except upon a motion made within one hour of the adoption of such vote, unless by two-thirds vote, provided that the time which elapses during any adjournment of the meeting shall be excluded in computing the hour since the adoption of the vote. Thirteenth, because of the constraints of state law pursuant to Proposition Two and a Half, the budget articles as recommended by the Warrant Committee to this Town Meeting are at the maximum tax levy limitation permitted by state law pursuant to Proposition Two and a Half. While the moderator will undertake motions to amend budget articles upward, the town's total appropriation may not exceed the Proposition Two and a Half limit. Thus, to avoid potential chaos and the necessity for additional meetings to balance the town's appropriation within the levy limit on the amount of revenue that the town may raise by your property tax, your moderator both urges and expects that any member offering an upward amendment to a budget article will also offer, for the benefit of fellow Town Meeting Members, specify an offsetting decrease in some other line item, or specify what additional source of revenue is or will be available. In addition, it is also permissible to make increased funding subject to an override ballot vote by the registered voters of the town. Fourteenth, each person speaking to an article or amendment is limited to 10 minutes, and no person may speak on a question more than once when any other person desires to be heard, or more than twice on the same question without permission of the Town Moderator. Pre-approved presentations will not necessarily be limited to 10 minutes at the discretion of the moderator, but I have encouraged all our presenters to do so. And lastly, in compliance with the American with Disabilities Act, we have made the warrant available in alternate formats. I also do want to note that there are members here in the room tonight that are subject to adverse reaction from fragrances. Strong fragrances, other fragrances containing carcinogenic ingredients can cause some pretty significant adverse reactions. We've designated a zone up here on the stage right, up at the back. And if you could honor that, if you are wearing strong perfumes, et cetera, we would very much appreciate it. So hearing no objection, those that I've mentioned will be the procedural rules for the meeting. So, certain matters coming before the Town Meeting require a two-thirds vote. In accordance with Chapter 448 of the Acts of 1996, I will entertain the following procedural motion, which allows the moderator to declare that a two-thirds majority vote has occurred. The motion is... So moved. Perhaps I'll just read it quickly for our new members. "On matters requiring a two-thirds vote, by statute, a count need not be taken unless the vote so declared is immediately questioned by seven or more voters, as provided in General Laws, Chapter 39, Section 15." I heard it was so moved. I hear a second. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Nay. The motion is unanimous. Some observations of this meeting. This year, we have several articles that require that two-thirds vote. I'll inform you of those before we vote on those motions. And at this point, I would like to go to two, recognize two committees who owe us annual reports on a regular basis. The first would be from the Airplane Noise Committee. Recognize Andy Schmidt and Cindy Christensen.
All right. Please let me know if you have any trouble hearing me. I'm Cindy Christensen, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Seven, and your Massport and your Logan CAC representative. I want to start by providing you with information on the Massport CAC. There are representatives from 35 cities and towns around Massport's three airports. Boston has six representatives, which makes us a 40-member committee. Listed here is the 2013 Enabling Statute for the Massport CAC. By statute, we are a state agency that is independent of Massport. We have all powers necessary or convenient to carry out and effectuate the Massport's five, uh, Massport CAC's five purposes. Our legislatures have created a unique, powerful, community-based agency with enough power and purpose to create change. And in the next slide, I'll show you some of that, the initial evidence of that. The purposes of the Massport CAC are, there's five of them. We appointed a member to the Massport Board of Directors. That's John Nucci from East Boston. We make recommendations on Massport's annual expenditure budgets. We can hold hearings. We haven't done that yet, but I think we will, soon. The fourth purpose is we review and comment to Massport and the governor on Massport's annual report. And the fifth one, that I have a little bit more information to share with you on, is that we make recommendations to the governor and the general court respecting the authority, which is Massport. We have recently voted on four motions. These are important because they're the first actions by this new state agency that have a positive effect on the regional noise burden. The first motion is to require all the A320 jets to be equipped with the Vortex generator. That's an air diffuser, and it will eliminate the whistle sound that so many people in Milton are affected by on the arrivals. This will be a substantial improvement to the residents of Milton. The second motion was for Massport to develop and use a noise-based landing fee. This is used in other countries, and all arguments point to it being effective, effectively used here. It works as an incentive for the airlines to fly their quietest jets in and out of Logan. The great thing about these first two motions is they can be done almost immediately, but of course, they won't. And I believe the CAC members will not, but will not let these fall through the cracks. I know that I won't. For the sake of time, I'm not going to go over the other two motions, but anyone who has questions can contact me after the meeting. This map shows the flight paths over Milton. The black line is for arrivals to the runway 4R. Almost 52,000 jets flew that line in 2016, leaving residents with noise and pollution, often for 19 hours a day for several days in a row. A very important statistic, and one that Milton should view as the handwriting on the wall, is that arrivals to 4R were up 14% in 2016 compared to 2015, whereas overall, at Logan, the increase was only 5%. The yellow and red lines show departure paths over Milton. These are famous for their 5:00 AM or earlier wake-up calls for many, many of our residents. The remaining two paths are arrivals to 4L. One is a visual approach, shown by the blue line that follows the border along Milton and Hyde Park. The one that runs parallel to the black line is a GPS approach. Please pay attention to those three, the two parallel and the blue line, because I'm going to refer back to them in two slides. There are six runways at Logan, and so there's 12 runway ends. With 12 possible places to land, a reasonable question is, why does 4R get a third of the arrivals? I believe it's a perfect storm of runway infrastructure at Logan, demand, fleet mix, and scheduling, and the, these, this negatively, negatively affects Milton and many other communities. I'll give you some examples. I don't have a laser pointer. I learned just when I came here that this is a dinosaur version of PowerPoint. And so perhaps at some point, the, this Town Meeting Group can, can vote to provide funds to, to, to get the newer version, so. I'll give you some examples of, of why it is that certain runways get used more than others. If you can see the runway that is labeled 15L, 33R, that's too short for jets to arrive on. And the reason that it won't be expanded is because there's clam beds at the end of it. Runway 14, which is down at the very bottom, close to where it says Milton, and 15R have... Does it work? Oh, there we go. Okay. This runway here, they, they allowed, they allowed a hotel to be built at the end of the runway, so making it unidirectional. Runway 15R is the longest runway at Logan, but there's so many obstructions at the end in the Somerville area there that the planes are not allowed to use the entire runway, which effectively makes it a much shorter runway than it's structured to be. The arrivals to 22R are restricted. The reason they're restricted are for noise reasons, and because there's so many homes in Winthrop close to that runway. These restrictions leave only a few runway ends for arrivals during high demand and for some jets, like this British Airways A380 that you see in the bottom right of this slide. This jet can hold between 500 and 800 passengers, based on what they decide to put on the inside as its design. This jet has just recently started arriving at Logan. It comes in three times a week with British Airways. It's around 1:30 on Sunday, Monday, and Thursday. And if you haven't seen it, it's actually quite spectacular to watch, watch it come in. The only runways that it can land on are the ones that are circled in red, 22L, 33L, and 4R. I've been told by Massport they can also land on 4L, but the pilots I talk with regularly have said that's not possible, too, too short. I want to notify you that there's repairs and maintenance that will start happening May 5th until the end of June on the main runway 4R. It also will continue nightly throughout the summer. So this is going to change things as far as the aircraft... So this is going to change things as far as the aircraft, air, pattern for the entire region. Here's, if you're interested, here's what I think's going to happen. There's going to be more traffic that's going to be shifted a half a mile over from that primarily overused runway 4R, so it'll be shifted over about a half a mile to the west where the, the 4L and will land on the 4L. That's temporary. There'll be increases in arrivals along the Hyde Park-Milton border. There'll be a slight reduction in arrivals to 4R, perhaps half, but that's still a lot for the people underneath that. Even though the runway is closed, what they're going to do is still fly over Milton on their original path and then do what they call a sidestep to runway 4L for the final approach, about two miles out. For residents who are sandwiched in between runways 4R and 4L arrivals, I think that they will see more of a balance to their left and their right than they're seeing right now, and a very slight decrease, just because this runway closure is going to make it more difficult for the tower to go to, to this configuration for times of high demand. Andy can't be here tonight. He's the Chair of the Airplane Noise Advisory Committee. I have three slides that I'd like to show you on his behalf and on the committee's behalf. The Airplane Noise Advisory Committee members are appointed by the Board of Selectmen and serve as an advisory committee by that, to that board. They meet about once a month and have extremely good detailed notes that I encourage you to look at if you want to know more about what their work entails. The, the members are listed there on the left, the links to the meeting minutes are there in the middle. The committee performs a wide range of activities, including working with me, educating the community, and tracking airplane noise complaints. In the next two slides that I, I'll show you briefly, you'll see what I'm talking about.
You've got about a minute left, Ms. Christensen.
Pardon me?
About a minute left.
Last one.
Just a minute left to go with you.
Oh, okay. Thank you. So I'll show you, the, the complaints are up, as you might imagine. Part of this is because the committee is doing its job of getting out and educating people, but also because of this increase in flights over Milton that I mentioned in one of my first few slides. Let me just review what I went over. I gave you the background, power, and purpose of the Massport CAC. I gave you some information about recent Massport CAC activities that show progress. I reviewed the flight paths over Milton. I mentioned the perfect storm. I notified you of the temporary closure of the 4R runway starting May fifteenth, and then I also mentioned a little bit about the Airplane Noise Advisory Committee. Before ending, I want to give a special thanks to the residents who register complaints at Massport and who call their elected officials. Please continue to do this, we need to hear your voices. I also want to thank the Board of Selectmen and Town Administration. But mostly, and finally, an extra special thank you to our state and federal elected officials who are supporting me every step of the way with my Massport CAC work. It makes a difference, and it's being noticed by, by other people and representatives in the region. This includes Senator Warren and Markey, Congressman Lynch and Capuano, our state Senator Walter Timmeltie, and our state Representatives Driscoll and Cullinan. So, there's a lot more that's going on. I've listed a few things down along the bottom of this slide. If you have questions, I'm happy to take them sometime outside of this meeting, but thank you.
If you turn to page twenty-two of your warrant, we'll begin with the business of the meeting. Normally, at this point, we recognize the Chair of the Warrant Committee, but Lee Michael McLean is out of the country in a secure, undisclosed location. And standing in for him is the Acting Chair and current Secretary of the Warrant Committee, Brian Boprey. Would you like to present, please?
Do I only get ten minutes, too?
Let's see how you do.
All right. Sorry about that, I hope I didn't eat into the time. My name is Brian Boprey, Secretary of the Warrant Committee and Acting Chairman for this year's annual town meeting. Tonight, I'll present for you consideration of the warrants process over the last several months, highlights of the budgets that we considered, a few interesting observations, some questions for you to consider as it relates to our desired cost structure for fiscal year eighteen. If you've not already done so, I encourage you to read the report of the Warrant Committee on pages eleven to twenty-one of the warrant. It not only gives a roadmap for reading the warrant, but it goes into much more robust detail than I can here tonight. We'll begin tonight with an overview of the key underlying metrics and levers in, in our recommended contingent budget, as well as provide some historical context dating back to fiscal year 2001. But prior to diving into the data, I think it makes sense to highlight some of the mechanics of the budget development process and how this year was unique for the town of Milton. For anyone new to the process, the Warrant Committee is appointed by the moderator. We meet throughout most of the year, create a budget forecast in November and December, which will determine the levels of funding or requests from the department heads, and this forecast is continually refined as new information becomes available. This year, department heads were asked to submit two different budgets. A non-contingent budget, which kept all costs level from the prior year, except for costs contractually required to increase, and the contingent budget, the basis for an override, which better meets the needs of our departments, replaces many positions which have been lost through cuts in recent years, and makes much-needed progress in several areas. The Warrant Committee met with department heads over several months to consider their requests and investigate savings opportunities. In parallel with our normal process, our strong Town Administrator created a balanced budget and presented it to the Warrant Committee for consideration. Leveraging information from both exercises, the Warrant Committee created two versions of the budget, and after careful consideration of the needs of Milton, the pressures on our departments, and the length of time since we've invested in many key areas, the Warrant Committee endorsed a contingent budget and presented it to the Board of Selectmen, School Committee, and other departments for consideration. The contingent budget is the product of several months of careful analysis and thoughtful negotiation to find balance between the growing needs of this town, resources for which have been chipped away through several years of just trying to get by, and the taxpayers assume tolerance for a potential override of Proposition Two and a Half to meet those needs. The warrant we'll present tonight outlines the financial and public service implications inherent in both the contingent and non-contingent budget scenarios. But it wouldn't be a financial presentation without some data, so we'll get into some, get into some data. So looking at the appropriation available from fiscal seventeen to fiscal eighteen, this first slide demonstrates how much more money the Warrant Committee had to allocate this year over last year. And most importantly, I'll draw your attention to the bottom two numbers. For fiscal eighteen, excluding enterprise funds, we had just south of 3.7 million more to allocate over the previous year. That may sound promising, but compare that to the last line, where it shows we have more than 5.6 million in new requests, and that's where the Warrant Committee comes into the picture, and where the people to my right spent well over fifty hours of volunteer time over the past year. If you wouldn't mind, please join me in giving them a hand and thanking them for their services. Okay, now some financial charts. So now we've provided a view of the income and expense disparity here in Milton, I want to provide some historical context to our fiscal year eighteen recommendation and some key, some trending in the key underlying metrics that we have. This chart here shows Milton's rank among the towns with the fifty highest average single-family tax bills. And note, this chart only goes through 2016 because the Commonwealth has not yet approved every town's tax rate. Milton's position in the top fifty has fallen significantly since the nineties, and for the past two years, we've come in at number forty. Next slide, please. Annualized revenue. In terms of revenue over the last seventeen years, you can see that state aid and local receipts, receipts have grown two percent and three percent annually since 2001, while we've become increasingly reliant on property taxes, the blue line at the top. It is encouraging, however, to see the red line, local receipts, ticking up significantly over the past two years, and that's a trend we'd like to see continue in the future. Looking at how the revenue pie comes together, you can see there, you can see seventy-seven percent is derived from property taxes, state aid makes up twelve percent, and local receipts eight percent. The other category that, should say other funds there, another three percent. This chart provides a valuable trended view, I think, for looking at our key revenue sources, and that it illustrates the relative percent change in Milton's revenue allocation since 2001. As you'll note, residential taxes have grown as a percentage of our total revenue picture, while all other funding sources have decreased in relation to residential taxes. While this is certainly a positive sign for our property values, this statistic also underscores the urgency for Milton to develop new revenue streams outside of property taxes, something we'll circle back to as we dive into the budget development process. Switching gears to our expense allocations for fiscal eighteen, this provides a similar view of the expense allocation across some of the noteworthy budget categories. And similar, we, similar to revenues, provides a relative percent change by expense categories since 2001. As you'll see, since 2001, all budgets have grown. However, as a percentage of our total spend, insurance and retirement are up significantly, while the percent spend on schools, fire, police, and public works have actually decreased The budget busters. Looking again at the insurance general, which is the purple line, and group insurance, which is the blue line, you can see how they've risen dramatically since 2001. The leveling off of these expenses over the last several years played an integral role in our ability to avoid an override. However, you'll note the fiscal eighteen spike, which has placed a greater strain on our expense baseline, and certainly contributed to our decision to ultimately endorse an operational override. For the last financial chart, we'll take a look at the largest four budgets, and this is really, really just to provide some optics around how they contribute on the total expenditures over the years. The dark blue line in the middle of the pack represents the trend for total expenditures, descending from the top. DPW's the brown line, Milton Public Schools green, Fire's red, and Police is light blue at the bottom. While the DPW line looks to have significant fluctuation, this budget has experienced significant change throughout the years, and you can see that explained on the box screen. And the most recent dip from last year is due to the creation of stormwater utility. And again, we think this just provides a visual representation of some of the deviation around the total expenditures and how the largest four budgets contribute to that. So, now that we have some historical context for the revenue and expense trending, I'd like to take a moment and give some transparency into the budget constraints associated with municipal finance in the Commonwealth and our respective tax composition. As you all know, there's limitations to growth in Milton, and that's grounded in our collective desire to preserve and protect its natural beauty and residential identity. And we're similarly consistent of our expectations for schools, police, fire, DPW, library, and other town departments. However, the reality is these costs associated with these expectations far outpace the 2.5% maximum tax increase and modest new growth assumptions for our top line, and nowhere is this discrepancy more evident than the non-contingent budget crop, year, which I'll walk you through here via the fiscal eighteen lines. Further slide seen here, revenue from property, revenue from property taxes will increase 3.3%, with the delta between the 2.5% attributed to new growth. Yet the non-contingent budget, which allows for only level service from prior year and contractual increases, with no incremental headcount, came in at a reasonable 5.2% increase over fiscal seventeen. And this right here, this crystallizes, the, this crystallizes the structural deficit in Massachusetts municipal finance. Before we've done any work on an already insufficient non-contingent budget, we're short over 2.3 million dollars. Based on this reality, we unsurprisingly ultimately arrived at a 1.4 million dollar shortfall in our non-contingent budget scenario. And this is the point where the Warrant Committee enters the pictures, where we're charged to engage in an objective and impartial deliberation with the appropriate stakeholders to determine how we're going to allocate cuts across the town for a balanced budget. Bottom half of this slide outlines our ultimate outcome and provides a department-level summary of the cuts with the passage of a non-contingent budget. I do want to call your attention to the asterisk and supporting footnote on this slide, which calls out the fact that the 1.4 million dollar shortfall and identified cuts here have not been revised to reflect the 209,000 revenue pickup brought to your attention, or brought to our attention, excuse me, last week and outlined in the various literature you received here tonight. While additional detail on the cuts is certainly available in the warrant for all departments, I do want to use this as an opportunity to speak to the specific damage these departments will endure under a non-contingent scenario. And while the school, school department can certainly speak in more robust detail about the severe risk in a non-contingent budget, I'd like to reinforce the pervasiveness of these cuts across all levels of education here in Milton. Schools will suffer a significant loss of funding, talented teachers, and important programs, including nineteen point four FTEs eliminated, which includes the loss of an instructional, instructional technology teacher, elementary band strings, artistic creative enrichment, reduction of time for elementary art, music, and gym, the loss of middle school, middle school STEM and math classes, the loss of middle school computer, music, and art electives, the loss of a high school math teacher, social studies, technology, English, and fine arts electives, and a reduction in the out-of-district coordinator position in addition to reorganizations of administrative and technology staff. At the DPW, recycling centers will be, recycling hours reduced to one day every other month, and the types of materials collected will be further limited. Trash will not be cleared from our business districts on Sundays. Damage barrels will no longer be eliminated, where damaged barrels will be eliminated, not replaced. Fewer trees will be replaced. Seasonal help will be reduced, and the summer employment program will be eliminated. Saturday wages will be eliminated, which, which will have negative ripple effects on the other departments, while their fleet of vehicles are off the road during normal work week hours for repair and maintenance. In getting to public safety, the fact of the matter is there'll be fewer police officers patrolling our streets. It's estimated that with the proposed cutbacks, there may be as few as four officers patrolling Milton 25% of the time. Milton is a town divided into six patrol districts. So not only does this mean two districts would go uncovered 25% of the time, the impact will be far greater when more, when more than one officer or car is required to respond to an incident, leaving the town without coverage. The Warrant Committee heard a new term this year, backfill staffing wages, which is a different label for overtime. But this naming convention is a helpful description for the, is a helpful description, excuse me, for the nature of overtime in a department with minimum staffing requirements that's also understaffed. If someone is out sick, on vacation, injured, training, or otherwise not at their post, how does that post get covered? It gets covered with backfill staffing wages when they exist. The Police Department relies on this funding to provide the necessary safety force for our town, and unfortunately, we are recommending to reduce it further. Beyond patrols, other priorities addressing increasingly complex, complex special populations, schools, elderly, domestic violence victims, traffic enforcement, and substance abuse intervention will certainly be more difficult. The Fire Department also operates with minimum staffing requirements and relies heavily on backfill staffing wages that we just spoke of. Whether two or three firefighters is the right number of people to staff our two smaller fire stations, the Fire Chief warned us that we're below minimum staffing requirements, and cutting more than the Warrant Committee is recommending here would result in occasional station closures. We wanted to avoid cutting past that point, so we recommended cutting up to it. The library will be closed in the weekend, meaning a loss of eighty operating hours annually and significantly reduced summer programming. And additional reductions will put further strain on the Council of Aging, Council on Aging, excuse me, consolidated facilities, the Parks and Recreation Department, and the IT Department. So, let's just get right to the question. When is the right time for an override? We've just illustrated, we've just illustrated the constraints of municipal finance here in Massachusetts and the painful cadence it imposes on our budget process. Each year, we don't pass a contingent budget. We're forced to meet our statutory obligations via cuts and eliminating capacity in this town. It's not a complicated calculus. We simply can't serve the evolving needs of this town with declining resources. To steal an analogy from our Chairman, Lee Michael, we always tend to wait until the platform is burning to endorse a contingent budget. We believe that time is now, and the scope of cuts that we just discussed across the entire infrastructure of this town has reached a critical mass, and it undermines our ability to provide the services to this town that have been differentiators for Milton for years. Increased concentration of unfunded mandates in the school budget has forced deep cuts to general education. Come July 1st, we certainly will not be able to say our streets are definitively safer or cleaner with cuts to police and DPW. We won't be able to say that emergency response times will be consistent as they were on June 30th with cuts to the Fire Department. And we will lose a valuable outlet for learning and development with the operating hours cut in the library. The Warrant Committee endorsed a contingent budget last year, but due to a lack of support from key stakeholders and unexpected revenue favorability, we ultimately abandoned our recommendation. But we did caution the audience that we still had not effectively addressed the operational burden that had accumulated on this town. Absent the development of new revenue streams or an operational override, we're just going to find ourselves in the same position next year, except we'll be discussing cuts in addition to the one that we just talked, we just discussed, and we're just going to be compounding the burden on this town. In evaluating the appropriate budget proposal, the Warrant Committee considered a wide range of options, and tonight, we stand before you with a recommendation for a contingent budget, where seventy percent of the budget restores not only the positions and services cut in a non-contingent scenario that we just discussed for fiscal eighteen, but restores the steady stream of cuts endured since our last override. And the remaining thirty percent of the budget better aligns the town's resources and infrastructure with the needs of our community. Our budget recommendation does not include every request the Warrant Committee received, nor every request we thought was needed or appropriate. We arrived at an override recommendation after careful consultation with all the appropriate stakeholders, including the fourteen department heads, elected boards and committees, and of course, our neighbors. So this slide starts by comparing our fiscal year eighteen contingent recommendation to last, the last override we had in fiscal 2010, and as you'll note, when we drafted the warrant, we recommended an amount that is 124,000 less than the fiscal year 2010 override on a budget that's over 29 million dollars larger. Even before considering the effect of inflation on the value of money today versus 2009, we believe that a lower override recommendation and proportionally much smaller is a tempered and reasoned, responsible recommendation. I think this data further reinforces the discipline that the Warrant Committee had in arriving at our recommendation and ensured that all stakeholders have submitted budgets that delivered long-term value to this town. As referenced during the non-contingent summary, the 209,000 in revenue favorability served to further decrease our contingent recommendation in front of you tonight. to further decrease our contingent recommendation in front of you tonight and enhance the variance, or reduce the variance, rather, versus the fiscal year '10 recommendation. In addition to all of the cuts referenced in the noncontingent slides, this matrix below outlines how the contingent appropriations will restore cuts made in previous budget cycles across the departments, including on the town side, two police officers, a master mechanic, an administrative relief at the DPW, oh, I'm sorry, administrative relief at the DPW, funding for preventive building maintenance and repairs, backfill staffing wages for the fire department. And in the school department, a vice principal at the middle school, assistant principals at the elementary schools, teacher support, reduced fees for riding the bus to school and participating in sports and activities, and a part-time guidance counselor. This next slide is the result of feedback with the school committee, schools administration, and town administration to prioritize advancement opportunities that may more appropriately align our resources with the needs of the growing complexities and demands of Milton. These positions and services include a code enforcement officer, a licensed craftsman for consolidated facilities, half a chief procurement officer, a reference technology librarian, an additional outreach coordinator for the council on aging, a senior administrative clerk for the town clerk's office, and an additional laborer for Parks and new funding for increased legal costs, including services related to airplane noise mitigation and master plan implementation. So what does this mean for us? That's the question we all want to know here. Our new strong-town administrators implemented functionality on the town's website that helps residents estimate how an override would impact their respective tax bills. Posted a screenshot here in the next slide. There we go. At the time that we put out the warrant, this was based on the average assessed value of $625,000, since we're recommending a lower contingent budget than what was in the warrant. That $378 is not exact, so you can assume that to be a few dollars lower, but directionally it's accurate. And I think using the $378 as a baseline, we believe this represents an excellent investment in your home and in the town that will continue to support a dynamic and well-regarded school system, a safe and well-maintained community with desirable amenities, excellent bond rating, and many of the other factors that have supported Milton's steadfast and reliable return on real estate and which have made it a great place to call home. In conclusion, I just want to remind everyone again of where we were here a year ago. Lee Michael stands here and gave the same riot act and said, foreshadowed the very discussion that we'd be having here tonight, and he asked members of this community to have some introspection and think about what your tolerance is for endorsing a contingent budget. Last year, we were fortunate to receive revenue favorability late in the budget process that helped prevent many of the identified cuts, and it ultimately led us to abandoning our endorsement for an override. This year, the reality is we're not as fortunate. It's clear to the warrant committee after hours of discussion that our staff is stretched, is stressed and stretched beyond what was reasonable. It's been eight years since the last override, and that override didn't even bring relief to many of the departments. It simply staved off massive cuts to school and public safety, because when you wait until you need to cut 40-plus positions, the cost of that override is so high, then there's pressure not to do the things you need to do. You push them off as we have for far too long. As the warrant committee signaled with our vote in March, we think it's time to replace lost capacity in this town, address our failing infrastructure, and advance Milton so it can continue to be one of the best places to live in the United States. We believe we've reached our tipping point and support a contingent budget. The Board of Selectmen support it. The school committee supports it. The library board of trustees support it. The fire and police chiefs support it. Universally, every department head we question supports it, and we hope you will support it too. Please make sure your opinions are heard here too. It's the only way we'll know the will of the voters. Thank you very much for your time. Have a great town meeting.
We'll now proceed to Article 1. It's recommended that the town vote to accept the report of the town accountant. Does anyone wish to speak to this motion? Seeing none, all in favor of the recommendation of the warrant committee say aye. Opposed, no. The motion is unanimous. Article 2. To see if the town will vote to authorize the collector of taxes to use all means of collecting taxes which a town treasurer when appointed collector may use, is submitted by the Board of the Selectmen. It's recommended that the town vote yes. Anyone wish to speak to this article? All in favor of the recommendation of the warrant committee say aye. Opposed, no. Motion is unanimous. Article 3. To see if the town will vote to authorize the town treasurer to enter into compensating balance agreements during the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2017, in accordance with the provisions of General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53-F, and to act on anything relating thereto submitted by the Board of Selectmen. Recommended that the town vote yes. All in favor of the recommendation of the warrant committee say aye. Opposed, no. It's unanimous. Article 4. To see if the town will vote to authorize a moderator to appoint a committee of five citizens to consider such proceedings of the legislature and state boards and commissions as may affect the interest of the town, and confer as they may think expedient with the selectmen in regard to the employment of council to represent the town in any such proceedings. The members of such committee to hold office until the final adjournment of the next annual town meeting and until the appointment of any succeeding committee authorized at such meetings submitted by the Board of Selectmen. Recommended the town vote yes. All in favor of the recommendation of the warrant committee say aye. All opposed, no. The motion is unanimous. Article 5. By the way, this will require a two-thirds vote. So it is recommended that the town appropriate the sum of $4,747,119 to fund the capital projects listed below. I won't read every one. You can see them. I'm going to go to the subtotals. So the subtotal for the recommended bonded capital items, $3,395,069. The subtotal for the recommended non-bonded capital items, $1,352,050. For a total recommended capital items of $4,474,119. And that to meet said appropriation, the sum of $4,747,119 be appropriated for the purpose of financing the rehabilitation, replacement, or enhancement of the town's facilities and public safety equipment as described above, including costs incidental and related thereto. That the treasurer with the approval of the Board of Selectmen is authorized to sell and issue bonds or notes of the town aggregating not more than $3,395,069 in principal amount pursuant to the provisions of Chapter 44, Section 7 of the Massachusetts General Laws as amended, or any other applicable law, and that the Board of Selectmen be and hereby is authorized to accept and expend, in addition to the foregoing appropriation, one or more grants or gifts from any other public or private funding source. And that the sum of $602,050 be raised from funds certified by the Department of Revenue as free cash, and that $750,000 be appropriated from the capital stabilization fund. Does anyone wish to speak to this article? Ms. Agostino.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Diane DiTulio Agostino, Precinct 9, and also a member of the Commission on Disability. I'd like to ask everyone to just to do a five-second exercise with me. If you could all close your eyes, and I promise nothing will happen to you while you have your eyes closed. There's an art, there's an item on here, two items, and it's accessibility streetlights. Imagine for a minute trying to cross the intersection at the Milton Public Library. Then imagine trying to cross Adam Street to get to the trolley down there to get to work. Even worse, try to cross anywhere in East Milton Square. Obviously, I could go on and on throughout the town where it's very difficult, even if you open your eyes and try to cross the street. We have been very fortunate to have a Milton resident named Cynthia Geis, who works at the State Department for those who are blind or who have sight issues. And she brought to our attention that many of our residents do have the need for this street lighting, so you'll see it identified as H/C signal accommodation. And the commission, as well as the residents, would like to thank the warrant committee and everyone else who has supported also taking it a step further by having a Signal and Ramp America with Disabilities Act study. So we really appreciate the need being filled for some of the residents, but we'd also like to point out if anyone knows of anyone else with other disabilities that are not being addressed, that they bring it to the commission's attention or call the Board of Selectmen however you can. We do have some openings on the commission. I'm going to take a two-second info commercial here, and it would be just wonderful if we could possibly find anyone who'd volunteer to be a secretary to the committee. It's just a job that's very, very fulfilling, and I thank you all very much for voting for this.
Mr. Ennis.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ewan Ennis, Precinct 3, Town Meeting Member. I have a quick question on the, sorry, I have a quick question on the funding source for the streetlight replacement. The warrant indicates that we're taking a loan from the capital improvement fund with a payback from savings in electricity costs. Electricity costs are part of the general expense lines for most departments. So how are we managing those savings when departments are going to be submitting their general expenses with that cut expecting their budgets to stay the same in future years? So how are you managing both a cut to that department budget and taking that money and putting it back into the stabilization fund?
Mr. Bowprey, do you have an answer to that? I see Town Accountant. Would anyone else want to speak to the motion while they are considering? Yes, Mr. Neely.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Rick Neely, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 3. In this budget, there's a request for $1 million for roadway improvements with no description or report as in past years for the last 30 years I've been here, describing where the roads are going to be paved. If you look further in your warrant, as in every year, there's a Chapter 90 description. There's no description for $1 million, what we're going to receive. There is an excellent description of the rest of the capital improvement items in that whole listing, but for $1 million, we have no description. I would request that the Board of Selectmen and the Capital Improvement Committee either tomorrow night or Thursday night provide at the front desk a listing of what is going to be paved or where the works can be performed for $1 million. If it's in one precinct, I'm going to come back up and make a motion to have the $1 million distributed more equitably. So I think as Town Meeting Members, we need to understand where the town intends to spend $1 million. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
So noted. Can I repeat the question? I'm not certain. Mr. Ennis, might you be able to summarize briefly the question unless, Ms. Conlon, do you, can you answer right now? Perhaps restate and then answer?
Mr. Moderator, would you recognize the town administrator to answer the first question, please? Thank you.
The town chair recognizes Mr. Dennehy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So when, when you retrofit streetlights, and they've done some in the town so far, you receive an incentive. In my history in Boston, we were receiving about 30 kilowatt-hours, 30 cents per kilowatt-hour. So every light that you retrofit has a wattage to that. When this RFP comes out, we're quite confident that we can retrofit the 3,200 lights in the town in about five weeks' time. That maximizes the incentive that we would receive with the more efficient lights. That will represent about $200,000 in savings. That is an incentive check that is mailed to the town, which we will put right back into the capital stabilization fund. If you look at public works as operating expenditure for electricity, it's roughly about $180,000. We anticipate, based on some very good guesstimates, that we could reduce the electricity charges for streetlights approximately $150,000 per year. We will take that savings, put that towards the capitalization fund to pay it back, and then in years going forward, we won't allocate as much. I believe the payback on this project is about two and a half or three years.
Mr. Ennis, do you have a follow-up? No, you're all set. Ma'am, would you wish to speak to the motion?
Karen Friedman Hanna, Precinct 2. I just have a question about the playground equipment, because, forgive me if I missed it in some explanation, but I thought that the, the playgrounds in the town were being rebuilt by funds being generated by the playground planners, private fundraising. So I'm curious about $112,000 playground equipment, what that has to do with what is being fundraised privately. It's a lot of money.
Do you run the item labeled Parks Playground Equipment? Understood. Please. To address this question, you can fast forward up to Article 49. Sorry. Hello? Can we turn the central mic on?
Refer you to Article 49, where the playground planners are attempting to raise this grassroots on their own with no assistance. However, there is assistance from the Copeland Foundation, which has matching grants, and this $112,000 allocated allows them to maximize that, this matching mechanism. And as you'll note, they are $150,000 shy of their goal.
Did that answer the question? Yes, no? Yes. Okay. Ms. Conlon, chair recognizes you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. In answer to Mr. Neely's question about the list of the streets, we'll provide that for tomorrow night, tomorrow evening's meeting.
Does anyone else wish to speak to this motion? All those in favor of the, by the way, this requires a two-thirds vote. So all those in favor of the recommendation of the warrant committee say aye. Opposed, no. The motion carries. Article 6. Recommended the town vote to amend Chapter 4, Section 17 of the general bylaws as follows. In Item 2, in the first sentence, delete 10,000 and insert in its place 25,000. As amended, said first sentence shall read, quote, "The committee shall study proposed capital projects and improvements involving major tangible assets and projects which have a useful life of at least five years and cost over $25,000," end quote. Number 2, in Item 4, last line, delete 5 and insert in its place 10. As amended, said Item 4 shall read, quote, "Such capital improvement program, after its adoption, shall permit the expenditure on projects included therein of sums from departmental budgets for survey, architectural, or engineering advice, options or appraisals, but no such expenditure shall be incurred on projects which have not been so approved by the town through the appropriation of sums in the current year or in prior years, or for preliminary planning for projects to be undertaken more than 10 years in the future," end quote. Does anyone wish to speak to this article? Just wish to comment that on Article 5, I do declare a two-thirds vote. Now back to Article 6. Does anyone wish to speak to this motion? All those in favor of the recommendation of the warrant committee say aye. Opposed, no. The, the motion carries. Article 7. Recommended that the town authorize the town audit committee to make recommendations to the Board of Selectmen relative to the appointment of a certified public accountant for the purpose of this article, and that the town appropriate the amount shown in the following tabulation under the heading Recommended FY18. I'll just read that column. So general audit, $63,200. OPEB valuation, $8,000. Total audit, $71,200. And that to meet said appropriation, the sum of $71,200 be raised from the tax levy. Now, is Ms. Kathleen White here this evening? Yes, please. Kathleen White is the chair of the audit committee and has a few comments to make as per her discharge of her committee's responsibilities.
Hi, good evening. I'm Kathy White. I am the chair of the audit committee. I'd like to thank the other members of our committee, Jay Funling, Chris Heavey, Chris Trachas, and Jeremy Zwydema. As we get our short presentation up, one of the requirements for the audit committee is to present to the annual town meeting an ongoing compliance with the management letter comments and other recommendations from our independent accounting firm. And so that's what I will do in our brief presentation tonight. As you know, the independent accounting firm that we have, Powers &amp; Sullivan, does provide its professional opinion with respect to our financial statements. In addition, they also issue a management letter, which has, as I said, recommendations for, you know, greater efficiencies or strengthening our internal controls and more efficient processes. Skip and go to the next slide. And at the end of fiscal year 6/30/16, they issued their management letter. In that letter, there were 13 separate points they had. 11 of them were commenting on the prior Eleven of them were commenting on the prior-year comments and the progress that the town had made on those. So I will sort of bucket these into certain categories. There were eleven that addressed prior-year matters. Five of those eleven have been completely disposed of. This is the list of the first five. Yes, right there, yep. There were three from the treasurer's office, a treasurer's bank account that was unnecessary and sort of not connected up to the systems correctly, and so that was closed down very quickly. Reconciliation of tax title from the treasurer's office, student savings accounts that needed to be in the cash system. So those were all completed. There's payroll reconciliations that were done, and then police detail processes. So those, you know, sort of disposed of, as I said, five of eleven prior-year items. There are five additional items... Go to the next slide, please, thank you. That are... The committee considers in process. Three of those, the first three are ones that will be... We expect to be resolved by the end of the current fiscal year, by June of 17, and, you know, not things that can be done, sort of, you know, sort of with the flip of a switch. So first is the purchase order system that had been used by the school departments and other departments are in the process of implementing document operational and accounting processes and cross-training. The town is adopting new accounting software, and so that documentation and procedures will, we expect, will be completed. The audit of student activity funds, you know, could not have been... Wasn't required until 2017, so could not have been completed before then. So we expect those additional items to be, you know, getting completed. There are two additional ones. One is monitoring compensated absences in a centralized system. It's a very manual process right now, and our auditors have, you know, commented on that. There's just not in, you know, and the town was on board with it, acknowledged it, but there's just not an easy economical, you know, one-size-fits-all solution to that. So the town management will continue to look at that, but, you know, it will continue to be a manual process and carry on that way for the time being. The last is a central procurement process, which we saw the chief procurement officer in the budget. So that is one that has been recommended for many years by the outside auditors and, you know, obviously is not something that one person can do single-handedly, requires funding and approval. So that we consider in process. There is a final historic item. If you can go to the next slide, which is one that should fall into the category of the... Similar to the first five that were resolved and disposed of very quickly. This is, again, in the treasurer's office, is payroll and menderer account reconciliations that are required to be done monthly. This was open at the end of 15, it was open at the end of 16, it is in process this year. Our auditors are out here starting their interim work even this week and will be, you know, trying to get to the bottom of the, you know, misunderstanding, miscommunication, additional information needed so this gets done. So we're hoping this is resolved by the end of this year, but we'll need some resolution on that one. There are two final items on the next slide that are, I would say, you know, not dramatic or new additions. The first is an item, a recommendation to document all the internal control, you know, on processes in our town, financial processes. And so I think our committee would characterize this as sort of a very broad item, best practice to do and, you know, and certainly is underway. The last item is not really a new item, informational and new accounting standards for other post-employment benefits reporting that change in 17 and additional requirements in 18. And again, this is not a, you know, sort of earth-shattering, groundbreaking, new, dramatic item. This has been, you know, an informational item for quite a period of time to the readers of the financial statements. Last little sort of footnote to it all, the other activity of the audit committee during the course of the year, we did complete a formal request for proposal process for audit services for the upcoming three-year term. We reviewed multiple proposals, interviewed three firms, and the committee did recommend to the Board of Selectmen to retain the incumbent firm of Powers &amp; Sullivan, and they will, you know, they will be engaged and they will rotate their engagement team, starting in year two of the three-year contract, just to provide a, you know, fresh look at the town. But we thought that was the best recommendation for the benefit of the town of Milton. That's our report from the audit committee. Thank you.
Does anyone wish to speak to this motion? All those in favor of the recommendation of the warrant committee, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carries. Article 8, recommended that the town appropriate the sum of three-hundred-and-thirty-five-thousand-seven-hundred-and-thirty-seven dollars and that to meet said appropriation, the sum of three-hundred-and-thirty-five-thousand-seven-hundred-and-thirty-seven dollars be raised from the tax levy. Does anyone wish to speak to this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the recommendation of the warrant committee, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
No.
The motion carries. Article 9, recommended that the town appropriate the amounts shown in the following tabulation under the heading Noncontingent Recommended FY-18, and that the town appropriate the amount shown in the following tabulation under the heading Contingent Recommended FY-18, contingent upon passage by the voters of the town of Milton of an override ballot question under Chapter 59, Section 21(c) of the Massachusetts General Laws. So I'll just read the two rightmost columns, the noncontingent and contingent. Contributory Retirement, five-million-nine-hundred-and-seven-thousand-three dollars under the noncontingent, nothing under contingent. The Group Insurance, ten-million-five-hundred-and-sixty-nine-thousand-seven-fifty-nine, noncontingent, and two-hundred-and-thirty-thousand-one-hundred-and-thirteen, contingent. Total Employee Benefits, sixteen-million-four-hundred-and-seventy-six-thousand-seven-hundred-and-sixty-two, noncontingent, and two-hundred-and-thirty-thousand-one-hundred-and-thirteen, contingent. And that to meet said appropriation, the sum of sixteen-million-seven-hundred-and-six-thousand-eight-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars be raised from the tax levy. Does anyone wish to speak to this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the recommendation of the warrant committee, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
No.
The motion carries. Article 10, recommended that the town appropriate the amount shown in the following tabulation under the heading Noncontingent Recommended FY-18, and that the town appropriate the amount shown in the following tabulation under the heading Contingent Recommended FY-18, contingent upon passage by the voters of the town of Milton of an override ballot question under Chapter 59, Section 21(c) of the Massachusetts General Laws. Unemployment, noncontingent, a hundred-and-thirty-thousand dollars, contingent, one-hundred-thousand dollars, and that to meet said noncontingent appropriation of a hundred-and-thirty-thousand dollars, the sum of a hundred-and-thirty-thousand dollars be raised from the tax levy. It is further recommended that the sum of a hundred thousand be appropriated as a contingent appropriation, and that to meet said appropriation, the sum of a hundred thousand dollars be raised from the tax levy, contingent upon approval by the voters of a ballot question under Chapter 59, Section 21(c) of the Massachusetts General Laws. In the event of such approval, the foregoing noncontingent appropriation of a hundred-and-thirty-thousand dollars shall have no effect, and the contingent appropriation of a hundred thousand dollars shall be the appropriation under this article. Anyone wish to speak to this article? Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Emily Keys Ennis, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 3. In looking at Article 9 and the contingent recommendation and in Article 10 contingent recommendation, there seems to be a discrepancy in the format, and I just wanted it clarified. So on Article 9, the contingent... Sorry, I've got a bit of a cold. The contingent recommendation is... Appears to be an additional two-hundred-and-thirty-thousand-one-hundred-and-thirteen dollars above the noncontingent recommendation. For Article 10, the contingent recommendation seems to be a total of a hundred thousand dollars. So in the past, what we've often done for the contingent recommendation is to have it be the difference between the noncontingent and the contingent. And so in one, under Article 9, it looks as though it's a difference. Under Article 10, it looks as though it's a total amount. I just would like that clarified. Thank you.
Mr. Boepri, the chair recognizes you.
So that is an accurate representation. Article 9 in the contingent column, that is a variance year-over-year. However, in Article 10, it is not a variance. It is a hundred... The noncontingent is higher, is a hundred-and-thirty thousand, and contingent is one-hundred thousand. So that is accurate.
Would anyone else like to speak to this article? Mr. Mullen?
Peter Mullen, Precinct 2. As I understand this article, it's to appropriate funds for unemployment compensation. I don't understand why, if we pass the contingent budget, and ultimately the voters pass the contingent budget, why would we have more unemployment expenses rather than fewer unemployment expenses?
Please?
We don't. It's less. In a noncontingent budget scenario, it's a hundred-and-thirty thousand; in contingent, it's a thousand. There would be more layoffs with a noncontingent budget passage, which is why that amount is higher.
Follow-up, Mr. Mullen?
Maybe I don't understand the recommendation, but it seems to me that if we vote yes, we're appropriating a total of two-hundred-and-thirty-thousand dollars.
Please, Mr. Boepri.
Again, I'll refer you to the last sentence of the recommendation, as well as to the previous clarifying point. It is not additive.
Is that now clear to the audience? Okay. Anyone else wish to speak to this article? All in favor of the recommendation of the warrant committee, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion is unanimous. Article 11. Now, in this article, folks, we do have a typo. It was such a small one, we didn't bother killing trees to reprint with a pink sheet. So before I read, I'll just point out where it is, and then I'll read the recommendation. So if you go to the section titled Treasurer/Collector in your warrant, which is page 30, and you'll see four job descriptions listed there. The last two both say Senior Administrative Clerk. The hours per week are... Should be reversed. So the first Senior Administrative Clerk should read thirty-seven-point-five, and the second should read twenty hours. If that's all clear? And there's no other changes in the article. So I'll proceed to the recommendation. Recommended that the town vote to amend Chapter 13 of the general bylaws, known as the Personnel Administration Bylaw, exactly as set forth in this schedule with the correction, and to appropriate the sum of thirty-four-thousand-one-hundred-and-three dollars to fund wage adjustments effective July 1, 2017, said some to be added to the salary accounts of the departments as shown in the following tabulations. I won't read every single one here, but the total is total Chapter 13 wage adjustments, thirty-four-thousand-one-hundred-and-three dollars, and that to meet said appropriation, the sum of thirty-four-thousand-one-hundred-and-three dollars be raised from the tax levy. Does anyone wish to speak to this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the recommendation... Sorry, you're coming down, sir? Nope, okay. Thank you. All those in favor of the recommendation of the warrant committee, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
No.
The motion carries. Article 12. It's recommended that the town vote to amend Chapter 13 of the general bylaws, known as the Personnel Administration Bylaw, as follows. In subsection D.6 of Section 4 in the second paragraph, delete the first sentence which reads, "All offices of the town shall be open continuously for the transaction of business between 8:30 a.m. and 5:00 p.m. on every day except Saturdays, Sundays, legal holidays, and days observed as legal holidays." As amended, the second paragraph of Chapter 13, Section 4, D.6, would read, the personnel in quote, "The Personnel Board shall have the authority to allow a work schedule for individual employees which provides for work between hours other than 8:30 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., provided that the Personnel Board determines that such a schedule is in the best interests of the town of Milton," end quote. Does anyone wish to speak to this article? Seeing none, all those in favor of the recommendation of the warrant committee, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
No.
The motion carries. Article 13. It's recommended that the town appropriate the amounts shown in the following tabulation under the heading Noncontingent Recommendation FY-18, and that the town appropriate the amount shown in the following tabulation under the heading Contingent Recommendation FY-18, contingent upon passage by the voters of the town of Milton of an override ballot question under Chapter 59, Section 21(c) of the Massachusetts General Laws. And again, I'm going to read the right two columns and the subtotal lines you see for each of the numbered sections. So inspectional services, total inspectional services, noncontingent, four-hundred-and-forty-seven-thousand-five-hundred-and-six, contingent, fifty-two-thousand-one-fifty-three. For fire, total fire, five-million-two-hundred-and-seventy-two-thousand-two-hundred-and-twenty-five. Noncontingent, I'm sorry, contingent, one-hundred-and-thirty-seven-thousand-seven-hundred-and-fourteen. Emergency Management Agency, noncontingent is ten-thousand-six-hundred-and-fifteen, contingent is zero. Police and Youth, total, noncontingent, six-million-eight-hundred-ninety-thousand-seven-hundred-and-seventy-two dollars, contingent, one-hundred-and-ninety-four-thousand-four-hundred-and-eight dollars. Total Public Safety, noncontingent, twelve-million-six-hundred-and-twenty-one-thousand-one-hundred-and-eighteen, contingent, three-hundred-and-eighty-four-thousand-two-hundred-and-seventy-five. And to meet said appropriation for the lease law enforcement, the sum of one-thousand-four-hundred dollars be transferred from the dog licenses surcharge account received pursuant to Chapter 197 of the Acts of 1981, and that the balance of thirteen-million-three-thousand-nine-hundred-and-ninety-three dollars is to be raised in the tax levy. Does anyone wish to speak to this article? Yes. Mr. Sloan, is that it?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Joe Sloan from Precinct 10. I want to speak specifically to the line item about the code enforcement officer. We've been asking for that for a number of years now. I know it was in the possibility of a contingent budget last year, and we lost that opportunity. But speaking on behalf of Precinct 10 residents, Precinct 10 and Precinct 1, our neighbors in Precinct 1, are especially hit hard by the lack of a code enforcement officer or code enforcement personnel. The list of code violations in addition to what's in the recommendation is very lengthy. We have unregistered vehicles, we have abandoned boats, we have the paving of front lawns for additional parking, we have the paving of side yard setbacks right up to adjacent neighbors' property lines, we have the storage of multiple commercial ungaraged vehicles for supporting businesses, we have parking on the tree lawns and the setbacks, which is a code violation, and this is destroying the sidewalks in many cases, have damaged trees, and in fact, in some cases, have obliterated trees that were just newly planted on our streets, not to mention piles of trash and construction debris. The quality of life in these neighborhoods is slowly being eroded by the lack of code enforcement. And as time goes on, without code enforcement, what's happening, I believe, is that people are feeling like this is acceptable. They're seeing it happen, and they're not seeing any repercussions for the folks that are doing it, and I think that the problem is growing. We understand that there's a building boom in Milton, and our current inspectional services department needs to pay attention to building permits, but whether this position is funded or not, these neighborhoods need help. They really need relief. And I know I and fellow colleagues, town meeting representatives from Precinct 1, have spoken with our town administrator recently about this, and I believe attention is going to be paid to it. I have a specific question that maybe our town administrator could answer, and that is if this position is funded, can we be confident that this position would be solely devoted to code enforcement and that the resources of that position would not be dispersed into other needs within that department?
Mr. Jenny, would you like to answer that question?
Thank you. Mike Dennehy, Town Administrator. Yes, it will. That that position will be fully dedicated to proactively canvassing our neighborhoods and taking care of all of the things that Mr. Sloan mentioned.
Thank you for that ten-second answer. Would anyone else like to speak to this motion? Seeing none, all in favor of the recommendation of the warrant committee, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion is unanimous. Article 14. I think everyone should know by now, we have a pink sheet on Article 14 representing some changes. Everyone have a copy of that? If not, there should be some up at the table. I'll proceed with the reading. It's recommended that the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to appoint a fire station building committee consisting of nine members, and to fund this committee to allow a review of the existing study of the Firespace Needs Committee, of the existing operations and conditions of the three existing Milton Fire Department stations. The committee will be charged to solicit and retain services of an architectural firm and/or other consultants and professionals as necessary to refine and develop the initial findings of the Firespace Needs Committee. The present- Needs Committee. The present Firespace Needs Committee has been funded to date through the generosity of private donations. The design professional should be charged to review the recently completed study of the three fire stations, including analysis of existing and proposed sites. Investigate, find, propose, and seek funds for the renovation and construction of the three Milton Fire Stations. Develop design plans and specifications sufficient for bidding and to develop projected project cost estimates and schedules. And it is further recommended that the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to apply for state and/or federal funds to assist and/or to reimburse the town in connection with any of the foregoing. To authorize the Board of Selectmen to accept grants, gifts, or donations on behalf of the town for the purposes of this article, and to determine how such appropriation shall be raised, whether by borrowing, under any applicable provisions of law or otherwise. And it is further recommended that to begin funding this work with an initial investment to support the committee in its efforts, the town appropriate the sum of $40,000 to be raised from funds certified by the Department of Revenue as free cash. Before we go to speakers, Mr. Boeprin, because of the significant change, do you have any comments or explanation you'd like to make?
I'll defer to Steve Moorash for additional details. However, I just want to point out that the key fundamental changes here are the changing of the consisting of five members to nine. We had five in as a placeholder. That was a requirement that we had to have in there. The four bullet points have been distilled down to three. And instead of the generic description around authorization around boards and committees in town, it specifically calls for the Board of Selectmen to apply for state and/or federal funds to assist and/or reimburse the town in connection with any of the foregoing, and then to authorize exclusively, again, the Board of Selectmen.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Steve Moorash, the Chair of the current Firespace Needs Committee, if I got the name right.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Steve Moorash, Precinct 2, Chair of the Milton Firespace Needs Committee. This is the longest six months that our committee has ever spent. We were formed in October of 2013, and we are still here in May of 2017. We really have done what you have asked us to do, and asked us to do, and asked us to do. We have studied this space needs of the Milton Fire Department. We submitted that report back in town meeting of May of 2014. We did our best to get off the hook, but at that point, the town moderator, Mr. Brian Walsh, said, "No, you can't get out that easy," so we're still here. We then did another study of this, of the findings that we put together back in 2014. We hired a consulting company, Castle Booze Associates, to review what our findings were. We looked at, we heard comments about saving buildings, existing fire stations. We have done that. The plans that we proposed, taking consideration of saving portions of the main fire station, as well as constructing some new fire stations. We have conducted three public meetings, and I'd like to thank the over 200 residents of this town that came to those meetings and asked us questions. We heard your concerns, and we added those to our website. But again, this does not deal with any of those issues of what goes where. That, we believe, is really the purview of a new Fire Station Building Committee. It's time for that committee to be formed. It's time for our committee to be discharged. There is something I did want to just point out in the article as you read it. This has been a learning process for us on the committee, as well as the town. I would say that the initial recommendation was for $2 million to support the needs of this committee, the building committee. We found out after meeting with the Capitol Committee that you can't put the cart before the horse, and you have to have a project funded to do the work before you can ask for the $2 million to go and support art and architectural designs and project management. So, that $2 million was reduced by the warrant committee to $40,000 to allow this committee to do work for the next year. I ask you to support this article. I wanted to thank the warrant committee for the work we've done over the last few months, especially the last few couple of days. I'd like to thank the Board of Selectmen, not just this one, but the previous one, for the work that you guys have done in supporting this committee. Both town moderators, Mr. Walsh, Bob Hiss for his work in helping us with this, and members of our committee and some folks in town. I'd like to thank the two town administrators that we've worked with, Mr. Dennehy, and also Anne Marie Fagan, who really steered us through the process of getting this done. Bill Ritchie from the Consolidated Facilities Department helped us out looking at existing studies that were done and kind of pushed us in the right direction. We have a couple of folks that worked for Castle Booze Associates that did a great job. They built this website for us. Want to thank them. Our committee itself, John Sheldon, Chief Grant from the Milton Fire Department, Tom Hess from our committee, Brian Toohey, a former firefighter in Boston, was on our committee for all this time, did a great job contributing. I'd like to thank Tom Kelly, the late member of town meeting, for the work that he did in getting us to where we are today. And Linnea Mellon, who many people don't know, but it was her generosity with her estate that provided the Fire Department with a gift that we were allowed to leverage and use to hire our consultant to go through this process that we've been through. So, with that in mind, I'd like to thank our families, especially my wife, for letting us out of the house as much as she did to get this work done, and the support that this town meeting has done. There are a couple of issues that we -- there's a big elephant in the corner we're not going to get away from. There's some discussion, there was a lot of discussion during our town meetings about where we put the East Milton Fire Station. I think that's a very real issue. There's over 560 people who have signed petitions not to put this on the East Milton Library, the former site of the East Milton Library, now situated by the Milton Arts Center. We support the Arts Center. We thought we had a good proposal. Folks can differ on this, but I think that is the purview of the new Fire Station Building Committee. So, that's kind of where this process is. So, I ask you to support this article and discharge us and have a new Fire Station Building Committee to move this project forward. Thank you.
Mr. Cronin, you're recognized.
Thank you. And I support the appropriation of $40,000 for the purposes of the new Fire Station Committee. And I'd like to thank the committee that just has completed their work and their traffic job. Difficult. In 1952, we opened the East Milton Fire Station, and it replaced a wooden fire station that had been built there in 1898, I think, as best I can recall. The Art Center or East Milton Library is located in the residential zone. It's a totally inappropriate location for a fire station. I suggest that the new committee will conclude that the new fire station, or the East Milton Fire Station, will have to be rehabbed in place and kept. It was built as a two-ladder and an engine company for two vehicles, and now there's only one, so there's ample room to use that building. And Chief Grant had commented to me at one point that the Atherton Street Fire Station would lend itself to being rehabbed and maintained. It's an attractive building, and it's, again, to house one engine, so that the whole question of rehabilitation, in my opinion, has not been exhausted, and that new committee will have to look at it. But the article has been changed, the recommendation has been changed, to eliminate the bullet point about rehabbing existing stations. Now, all three stations in 1987 were brought up to code, and the Westerly addition to the central station behind the town hall was torn down, and a new wing was built with oversized doors for the modern apparatus. So, I'm surprised that we're so eager to spend 20 or 30 million dollars in building three new stations. I suggest the committee will want to look at that. And I'm wondering if the wording of the new article has precluded looking at anything other than what the first committee has proposed. And the other surprising thing about the article, or rather, the recommendation, is that it has the Board of Selectmen appointing the building committee. My recollection is, over the years, building committees have always been appointed by the moderator. At the Council on Aging, the 1952 East Milton Station, the schools, they've always been moderator-appointed committees. I'm not trying to take any work away from the Selectmen.
But you are giving it to the moderator.
Yes. I know the Selectmen are not specialists in building dog pounds. They offered $1 million seven, eight years ago to build a dog pound, and it's still in the planning stages. It's complicated. The town farm has been sold five years ago, and those are things that are difficult to work out, all the details. And I hate to burden the Selectmen with building fire stations based on recent experience with these little projects. So, perhaps the chairman of the warrant committee could address the bullet point about reconstruction, which has been omitted.
So, your question is about why was reconstruction or rehabbing omitted?
Yes.
Sorry?
And would they consider including that bullet point? And would they consider having the moderator appoint the committee, which is the conventional? Would the Selectmen like to give it away?
Are you making a friendly amendment, or just a question right now?
Perhaps the Selectmen would like to give it to the moderator. I don't want to be pushy, you know?
Mr. Burns?
David Burns, Precinct 2, Member of the Board of Selectmen. Thank you, Mr. Cronin. The Board of Selectmen would like to make a friendly amendment for the town to vote to authorize the moderator to appoint a Fire Station Building Committee.
Thank you very much.
That addresses one amendment. Why don't we deal with that for the moment? Perhaps we'll deal with that point.
You're wanting to run to the Second Amendment?
Yeah. So, Mr. Boeprin, does the warrant committee accept the friendly amendment? They have to accept it, okay? So, the Firespace Needs Committee apparently needs to weigh in on this proposed amendment.
We support the friendly amendment to have the town moderator appoint the nine members of the committee, sir.
Do you accept the friendly amendment?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Very good. And now, the warrant committee is going to vote briefly? Mr. Boeprin?
The warrant committee agrees with the recommendation, with the motion on the table.
You accept the, you approve in favor of the friendly amendment?
We accept the friendly amendment.
Okay. Okay? So, then, because it's a friendly amendment, it does not require a vote. It's been accepted by the various parties. So, if you look, are we making that change live up on the screen? If not, I think you can read that in the first paragraph, it would say, "The town vote to authorize the moderator to appoint a Fire Station Building Committee." Now, your other question, Mr. Cronin, you wanted to find out the thinking behind removal of reconstruction or rehab.
On the original recommendation. Compare the relative advantages, disadvantages, and associated costs of renovation additions versus new construction for each station. Page 40, second bullet from the bottom.
So, maybe we'll start with, Mr. Moorash, back to you, the point of the reason, could you explain to Mr. Cronin and the audience the reason for the change in language from the original text that's in normal text versus the new recommendation in bold text related to rehab and reconstruction, right?
This would be added.
Well, you now, you just have a question, or are you making an amendment?
No, I'm suggesting we add that bullet point to the revised recommendation.
Yeah, perhaps, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Excuse me, Mr. Moorash, just want to make sure whether we have a, just to be clear, you're making a formal request for a motion to change the language?
Taking the revised recommendation, which is in pink, and adding the bullet point from the previous recommendation. Compare the relative advantages, disadvantages, and associated costs of renovation additions versus new construction for each station.
So, you're proposing to make that as a friendly amendment to start?
Yes, that would be nice. Yes, Mr. Moorash might agree to adopt that as a request to the warrant committee as a friendly.
So, let me make sure everyone's clear. So, what Mr. Cronin has asked is, for the moment, a friendly amendment to take the third bullet in the original article in normal text, compare the relative advantages, disadvantages, and associated costs of renovation additions versus new construction for each station that was eliminated in the recommendation, and reinsert it as a fourth bullet
Correct.
in the recommendation. That's his request for the friendly amendment. Mr. Moorash, could you explain?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Steve Moorash, Precinct 2, Chair of the Milton Firespace Needs Committee. To answer Mr. Cronin's question, why this was stricken here and put, and not put in the new recommendation, this committee has for over three and a half years, did go back and look at comparison between renovation, new construction. We actually have done this more than once with our consulting.
I understand.
We believe that, and again, the article that you have in front of you does ask that this committee, this building committee, could go back and look at what this committee's work has done before.
It does.
I would strongly say that we have already done that. I would strongly say that we have already done that, sir.
You said the new committee should be flexible and be able to review.
I have no problem with that. I would, I would...
This is not...
My personal opinion is that that committee can study this all over again and would find the same thing that we found.
Well, the wording...
I would point you, sir, to the Boston Globe this afternoon, this morning, with engine 50 in Charleston, which faces the same things that our fire stations here face, what our firefighters face. Cosinogens, diesel exhaust from engines, these are firehouses with the exception of Engine 2 over in East Milton that were built for horses, where there was no separation. And with all due respect, Mr. Cronin, you may have brought this up to, up to standards, as you said, back in 1988. I will tell you that these fire stations today do not meet the standards and the specifications and standards for new fire stations today. We now separate the engine compartment from the living quarters of firefighters because of that carcinogen that we've found, and it just goes on and on. The current configurations of our fire stations do not support modern firefighting, and modern hazardous material incident response in the 21st century. So as we looked at this, we said, this is the way we have to go. And again, these are the recommendations that are the Firespace Needs Committee. We believe it's up to the, up to the new building committee to look at that recommendations that we made and go through this. Would I support this as a friendly amendment? If it gets it through this meeting to create this building committee, I'm more than happy to do that, but I would say that this has just been more work over ground we've already covered, and I leave that up to you, sir.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Morash. I think that's an endorsement for the warrant committee to consider that question as a friendly amendment from both of us.
So I'd like to just...
With all due respect, Mr. Moderator, that was not an endorsement.
So let me just get something clear here. So, Mr. Morash, did you accept the friendly amendment?
No, sir, I did not.
No, you did not, okay. So at the moment, then, we now have a new amendment on the table. We're not, no longer talking about the article. I believe I heard a second to Mr. Cronin's, I see a second to Mr. Cronin's amendment. So now the motion on the table is whether to amend the recommendation with that fourth bullet point, as Mr. Cronin has requested. Does anyone now wish to speak to that amendment? I'll recognize Mr. Burns, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. David Burns, Precinct 2, member of the Board of Selectmen. I'm speaking in place of Chair Conlon, who had to accuse herself. Our board would like to speak to include in the recommendation to compare the relative advantages and disadvantages and associated cost renovation additions to the new construction of each station, knowing obviously that this Firespace Needs Committee has done yeoman's work, and obviously knowing that our firefighters are working in deplorable conditions, but I think that it should be duly noted that this Board of Selectmen supports that being reinstated. Thank you.
Does anyone want to speak to this particular amendment here without offering any new amendments yet, we're just dealing with this one? Yes, ma'am, I think I saw you.
Cheryl Taggaias, Precinct 9. I would like to speak in support of the amendment. I agree with Mr. Cronin that the opportunity to renovate historic structures should be looked at first, and then only after true analysis of the pros and cons and being presented with the pros and cons. I think we had something similar with our schools years ago, where there was a proposal to build totally new schools, and then we renovated and added on to them. I'm an architect with nearly 30 years of experience. I've worked on converting historic structures to new uses. These things can be done. There are times when they become functionally obsolete, but I've reviewed the presentations and the analysis, and I personally am not yet convinced that it can't be done here. So I would like the town meeting to support Mr. Cronin's amendment, and thank you.
Mr. Giuliani?
Frank Giuliani, Precinct 3. I support the amendment also. In fact, what you're recommending here, it says, and the recommendation is to, this building committee consisting of nine members, and to fund this committee and so forth, to study the existing recommendations by the Fire Needs Committee for the existing operations and conditions of the building. So it's actually saying in the first paragraph that you want this committee to study the recommendations of this farmers committee in all aspects of it, and that would be including renovations and reconstruction. It actually says that's what you want them to do. So I would recommend we vote that amendment.
Thank you, sir. I think, Mr. Morash, you've spoken a couple times. I may recognize some of the other folks behind...
The friendly amendment, would that be a reason to get back up again?
I believe that would. By the way, any change of heart on the moderator part before you...
I'd be happy to do that, Mr. Moderator. Mr. Moderator, Steve Morash, Precinct 2. I will now go along with this friendly amendment. I look forward to this committee comparing this renovation and arriving at the same conclusion that your Firespace Needs Committee did. Look forward to that report very much, sir, from a distance.
Thank you very much. Have we been able to take a look and see, warrant committee, are you looking at the... Yes, thank you. Is the language correct now up on the screen? I'm sorry, I can't see.
Mr. Moderator, the warrant committee endorses the motion on the floor, approves the motion.
So now we have a revised article that's been amended by two friendly amendments. We're now on the main body, which is as amended twice. Does anyone wish to now speak to this amended article? I see some people up front. Ms. Agus, do you know you were next, I think? No, you're all set? Oh, yes, sir.
Hi, good evening. I want to thank the committee for all the work they did. I think they've done a lot of work and a good job. Oh, Scott Johnson, Precinct 9. In reviewing the article here, I'm, I'd like to make, offer a friendly amendment that the review, the analysis, and the comparison be done by a separate firm that develops the conceptual plans from a standpoint of avoiding any conflict of interest or inflation of the project, which would be to the benefit of the firm if they in fact did the architectural designs and planning also. It's very easy to have a conflict of interest and a price inflated when you have somebody reviewing, analyzing, and comparing when they know they could profit on the back end of the project. So I'd like to offer a friendly amendment that we have a separate firm do that, and they be excluded from the actual design of the actual project if it comes to pass, that it's recommended that it be done.
So do you have specific language in mind?
I do not have specific language. That would have to be introduced. But you could just say specifically that the review, the analysis, and the comparison would be done by a firm that would be excluded from the bidding on the project, of the actual development of the conceptual plans and the architectural design. In other words, you hire them to do the analysis, the review, and the comparison, and then after they've developed that part of the project, it's handed off to the winner or the bidder of the other way of doing the construction.
Okay. So we, in order for the committee to take some action, we'll need some specific language here. What if I take a minute and consult down with the warrant committee and...
It'll be fine. It's just, it's a, this is a fiscal responsibility, that's, I think, would just be a good control, having done a lot of building projects.
And just to, Mr. Morash, could you speak for a moment? You did engage a firm, I believe, in the past, in the Firespace Needs Committee already.
Steve Morash, Precinct 2, Chair of the Milton Firespace Needs Committee. Yes, Mr. Moderator, we put this contract out to bid following the specifications by the state to select a bidder. I'm not, I would ask town council, can you exclude someone from bidding on the second portion of this job? And I would also think that if you're going to throw this to that kind of open-air rebidding of this, I don't think $40,000 is going to get you in the front door. But that's not my concern, Mr. Moderator. But I just think, I, well, I don't think anymore.
So, Mr. Johnson, I've got a, we have a form, by the way, for members of the audience where you could write out your wording. Can I take a moment to craft it? Can I hand this to you, and you could give it some consideration? Well, Mr. Johnson takes a moment, Chair recognizes, nope, party sidebar. Well, Mr. Johnson takes a moment, Chair recognizes... Nope, it's already sidebar.
Okay, we have the amendment, friendly amendment?
Everyone's attention, we've got some proposed language for you to listen to, and then we'll hear from Mr. Flynn. Mr. Johnson?
First of all, I'm sorry it took so long. So after the three bullets in the recommendation where it says, "Review the existing conditions, analyze the functional space needs, and compare the relative advantages and disadvantages", we're going to inject, after this bullet, the design professional involved in the previous bullets shall be excluded from the final design and bid. Build. Build.
So you're creating now a, what would now be a fifth bullet, correct?
If you look at those four bullets, this would actually be in, after the third and before the fifth bullets, I mean, before the fourth. Between the third and the fourth, we're putting a fourth bullet in. So it's actually five bullets will be done when we're done.
Okay. Is this getting typed up on the screen now? Don't have it yet, okay. So if you could hand it to...
To who?
Yeah, okay. If you could hand it in. So, Mr. Flynn, you had a comment. You were asked a legal question by Mr. Morash, so Chair recognizes John Flynn.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, I don't believe this will be a valid condition, and the reason... And the reason I don't believe so is I think the bid laws would allow at least to consider the previous designer, if you will. And the whole point of the Massachusetts bid laws is to have fair and open competition. And I don't think that this condition would allow for that. It would be up to the reviewing, the committee, to review the credentials of the consultants and make that, there might be some reason why that if this firm decided to bid for that work, that maybe they don't qualify for the work for other reasons. But to, at this stage, to prohibit consideration of that firm, in my opinion, would not comply with bid laws. And I, that's my opinion.
So, Mr. Morash, Mr. Johnson offered this as another friendly amendment. Do you accept this friendly amendment?
Steve Morash, Precinct Two, Chairman of the Milton Firespace Needs Committee. No, Mr. Moderator, I do not accept this as a friendly amendment.
Okay, thank you. So, just by way of explanation, on a process, when we pass something at town meeting, it always goes up through the legal chain of command of the state for review and compliance with law. And there are times when we pass things that are later rejected. So it is possible for town meeting to pass something that is, that may later fail a legal test. That happened last year with the dog leash law, by the way. A portion of it was struck down by the office of the Attorney General and the rest of the law carried forward. So, at this point, we've now have a motion by Mr. Johnson. We need a second on that motion? I do not hear a second on the motion. In that case, the motion is not carried forward. So at this point, we are back now to the article as amended 10 minutes ago that had four bullet points in it and the nine members appointed by the unfortunate moderator. And does anyone else now wish to speak to this motion? By the way, I was contacted in advance by a citizen, Laura Kessler, who wanted to speak to this, but she hasn't notified. Is that you, Ms. Kessler? You were asked to speak in advance? Please, proceed. Come down, just state your name and address for the audience.
I'm Laura Kessler, Precinct One. I am a lawyer, but I'm here to address you as an artist trained at the Milton Arts Center. I'm here to support the Milton Fire Department in its efforts to modernize its facilities and the Milton Arts Center in its efforts to remain in its current location. With regard to Article 14, if town meeting members appoint a fire station building committee to develop conceptual plans, possible project costs and schedules necessary for improvements, that it also specifically task the building committee to examine all locations, not only locations currently owned by the town, as sites for the East Milton Fire Station. A number of public hearings have been held, and I have attended two of them. As part of the public presentation, Firespace Needs Committee members stated that they were directed by the Board of Selectmen to consider locations for the East Milton Fire Station that were already owned by the town. Members of the Firespace Needs Committee also state that there are other sites in East Milton that could meet the four-minute Fire Department response time recommended by the National Fire Protection Standard 1710. For a project presented with a proposed budget of $25 million in today's dollars, I believe it would be reasonable and prudent to explore alternative sites. Some have suggested that the Milton Arts Center and the East Milton Fire Station simply switch locations. Milton Town Assessment records show that the Milton Arts Center has over 4,500 square feet of finished space to the fire station's 1904. The basement of the fire station is unusable currently housing the electrical equipment for East Milton Square traffic control. The fire station is less than half the size of the MAC. The MAC has .607 acres of land for outdoor events. The fire station has only .16 acres. With a reduction in building size and space this drastic, the MAC event, gallery, and class spaces would be too small to support itself. There would be no outdoor space and virtually no parking in East Milton Square. The switch proposal would also require the MAC to shut down and vacate during demolition and construction of a new fire station and during renovation of the old fire station to make it safe for children and adults. Consider construction delays and a considerable shutdown period is likely. Gone is the goodwill, the customer base, and the revenue generated from classes, parties, the concert series, and gallery exhibits that pay the MAC's $1,500 monthly rent. A switch proposal makes no sense. Finally, and most importantly, I ask that town meeting members agree that the Milton Arts Center, as our center of art, education, and culture, offers the closest and best use of the property at 334 Edge Hill Road, donated by Nathaniel T. Kidder, for use as the East Milton Branch Library, based on his obituary published July 13, 1938, by the New York Times. In addition to numerous philanthropic boards, Mr. Kidder was a director of the Milton Historical Society and the Massachusetts Society for the Prevention of Cruelty to Children. Mr. Kidder was also chairman of the Board of Trustees of the Milton Public Library for 31 years and a member of the Library Board of Trustees for 44 years. Kidder donated the land for the Central Library and the Matapan and East Milton branches and contributed, quote, "a large sum of money" to complete the Central Library building, end quote. As library, as chairman of the Library Trustees, Mr. Kidder's donation was an expression of his commitment to the Milton Public Library, which he documented in his 1932 book, "The First 60 Years of the Milton Public Library." Mr. Kidder's service to the town of Milton should be honored and his intention should be respected. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Joan Clifford from Precinct Eight and the Executive Director of the Milton Arts Center. We fully support the plans to improve all three fire stations in town, but we object to our organization being removed from the building 334 Edge Hill Road so that a new East Milton Fire Station could be built there. Our nonprofit organization started 14 years ago as FAVOR, an after-school art enrichment program. We formed in response to art education being on the chopping block every year in our public schools. We thought, instead of driving out of town to get art classes for our children, why not see if other children would like the opportunity to learn art with their friends? In 2011, we were granted permission to lease the East Milton Library and we expanded our organization into the Milton Arts Center, an art education 501(c)(3) nonprofit offering art classes, gallery shows, music performance, birthday parties, lectures, and workshops. We have over 50 volunteers who run our organization. They produce gallery shows, set up sound and stage for music performance and monthly open mics, pull fundraisers, work with other community organizations, and create programming that add value to our town. One program we developed, Art in the Windows, now in its fifth year, is an annual free community public art project for children and teens. We collaborate with our town, local businesses, and organizations to obtain the sites and funding to run this program. Thank you to our town officials for allowing children and teens space. This sends a powerful message that their concerns are heard. In two weeks, 16 projects will be installed across town. We're really pleased that this project was chosen for funding by the Massachusetts Cultural Council, a competitive state grant that awards on a high level of public value and community engagement. We need our building. We renovated this space at great expense and no cost to the town. It's a perfect fit for our needs. The gallery committee has hosted over 70 local artists in just the past few months. The music committee hosts local musicians every month and sets up a music series so we don't have to drive into Boston to see well-known regional and national performers. We recently updated the art room to make space for more classes in sewing and screen printing. We're blessed and cursed by having Boston next door. Mostly blessed, but a little cursed because we haven't done enough work to develop our own cultural resources, the talented artists and musicians who are our neighbors. This building lets us come together to appreciate their work and to teach the next generation of artists and musicians. The arts teach us many lessons. Elliot Eisner, a respected arts educator, said there are several paths to take when approaching problems and that all problems can have more than one solution. We think there are other solutions to finding a space for the East Milton Fire Station and we ask for your support in keeping the Arts Center in its current location. We further ask that you join us in placing a higher value on the importance of arts in our community. Thank you.
Ms. Agassino, just, are you here to speak or just? Just, yes, sir.
I am Kevin Danbrook, Precinct Eight. I'm also on the board of directors of the Milton Arts Center. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Just to, just to briefly state, until now, the Firespace Needs Committee was privately funded and they've said that they were directed to only consider town-owned property for the East Milton Fire Station. But first of all, before I even get there, all of us firmly support the improvement of all the firespace facilities throughout town. That goes without saying. We all seen the conditions there and we know that that needs to be taken care of. But now that there'll be public funding for this project and it's projected at being costing somewhere over $25 million, we believe with that kind of money, there should be, we should be open to looking at other pieces of property that are not currently owned by the town and also, as Mr. Cronin said, to relook at rehabilitating the current East Milton Station. So with that in mind, we do have a friendly amendment proposal? Should I read that out? Do you have that?
Please.
Okay. So, in your already amended Article 14, our friendly recommendations goes, "To solicit and retain services of an architectural firm and/or other consultants and professionals as necessary to refine, develop, and analyze the initial findings of the Firespace Needs Committee, prioritizing the development of plans for the Atherton Street and the Central Fire Station while studying alternative sites for the East Milton Firehouse, including property not currently owned by the town that will not impact the current Milton Arts Center and the surrounding residential neighborhood."
Okay. So, offered as a friendly amendment?
Yes.
Let's see. You submitted this language in advance to me. I passed it to the warrant committee clerk. Can you pull up the text just so Mr. Morash can see it? In effect, this would get inserted at the end of the second sentence. I'll explain to the audience where it goes. So if you look at the first paragraph of the article, after the second sentence, because the sentence seconds starts with, let me make sure I get this right. It's in the red, yep. So the second sentence currently reads, "The committee will be charged to solicit and retain services of an architectural firm and/or other consultants." And then when it says, "Refine and develop the initial finding of the Fire Station Needs Committee", after that, they're inserting a new clause that I'll read again. So after that, where it says, after this, in the second sentence, Firespace Needs Committee, a new clause, "Prioritizing the development of plans for the Atherton Street and the Central Fire Station while studying alternative sites for the East Milton Firehouse, comma, including property not currently owned by the town, comma, that will not impact the current Milton Arts Center and the surrounding residential neighborhood." Have you found the language now? Yes, it's up there, great. So, Mr. Morash, offered as a friendly amendment, what is your reaction?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Steve Morash, Precinct Two, Chairman of the Milton Firespace Needs Committee. At three public meetings, of which the last two speakers attended and raised these same issues, we did in fact make the statement that we felt that the first fire station that should be under construction, renovation, rehab, should be the central fire station. We then said that we thought, in our opinion, the next station should be the Atherton Street Fire Station. That would give us time to look at the East Milton Fire Station. At each one of those meetings that we had and the previous three speakers were there and asked the same question, we said that our committee would be open to looking at any location in town, especially in East Milton, that met the four-minute requirement standard to get a piece of fire apparatus in front of a house if it was on fire for response. I think this amendment, by saying that whatever we do in this town to protect our residents will not impact the current Milton Arts Center and the surrounding residential neighborhood, is disingenuous. I'd like us to think about what we're building here and what we're asking another committee to build. And by, I want to be very clear. This person will not be on that Fire Station Building Committee. We would like nine other citizens to take a clean look at what we've done, the work we've done, and laid the groundwork and go through this. Whatever they decide, God love them and God save the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. So I don't see this as a friendly amendment. I think when we're looking at what we're trying to do to enhance fire protection, enhance the safety of our firefighters and their lives, I think everything should be on the table. I mean, everything. So I do not accept this as a friendly amendment because it holds this new committee's hands on what they can and can't do. But in reality, the way this town works, we've talked with capital planning, we've talked to the selectmen, we've talked to everyone. And I want to be realistic with you. This is not like the school building project. We do not have 90% reimbursement and $100 million to do this project. Don't have $30 million to go. This will be done in stages, in our opinion. And we think by the time we get around this, excuse me, by the time this town gets around to dealing with the East Milton Fire Station issue, I will be dead. Most of the people in this room may not longer be in Milton. That's the purpose of the building committee, is to look at what this schedule is, how does it move forward? And we support the arts. We support the Milton Arts Center. I have two art historians in my family, my daughter and her husband. I like art. My wife takes classes at the Milton Arts Center. My wife comes home with joy in her heart with the work she brings back from this. And as far as the East Milton Fire Station, I don't know about square footage, but when you don't need that apron to bring a truck in and out, you probably pick up 2,000 square feet that a new architect could do a lot of wonders for, for a new building. So I think, Mr. Moderator, I do not support this because of the way it holds the town's hands and what they want to do with town-owned property in Milton. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you.
So...
Thank you. So, at this point, since the friendly amendment was rejected, I'd like to ask, Mr. Danbrook, do you want to now propose this as a formal amendment?
Yes, I'd like to propose this as a formal amendment.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Now we're talking about the language as proposed in the amendment, which I hope you can see up on the screen up here.
And can I comment on Mr. Morash's last statement?
Well, actually, we should let another person speak against this now, since you've already spoken once. If no one else wishes to speak, you can come back again. Does anyone wish to speak to this amendment? Yes, now, sir. Your last bite of the apple.
I just wanted to point out that I think Mr. Morash reads more into that statement than what it actually says. Prioritizing the development of plans for the Atherton Street and Central Street Fire Station while studying alternatives, it just went away, but I have it here. It does not rule out considering, it just says to prioritizing while studying alternative sites for the East Milton Firehouse, including property not currently owned by the town that will not impact the current Milton Arts Center and the surrounding residential neighborhood. It's not saying that's completely out of the question. It's saying, be open to other possibilities. Look at other pieces of property that haven't been considered yet, that will maybe keep this neighborhood intact and keep this beautiful building where it is stood for a long time and has been serving the community well.
Thank you, sir. Does anyone else wish to speak to this motion to amend? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Krista Bagley-Jones, Precinct Eight. And I just want to be really clear, I am a member of the MAC Board of Directors. I am also a strong supporter of the Fire Department. I have a lot of personal gratitude for them, for services that they've provided my family. So I just want to be clear about that. I think what people need to understand is the Milton Arts Center is comprised of volunteers. They put their blood, sweat, and tears into renovating this space, and also money that they earned teaching art classes. If they have to move, most likely, they're going to go under. There's only so much volunteers can do, and if you haven't been to the MAC yet, you need to go visit it, or I suggest you go visit it and see what a jewel it is. It's the hidden jewel of Milton, and it is absolutely beautiful and does wonderful things. I would hate to see the Fire Department needs not taken care of, but I'd also hate to see the Milton Arts Center's needs not taken care of. It's a jewel, and I hope that you can support that East Milton MAC Center, the Milton Arts Center can be taken off the chopping block, so to speak. We were told that we would, that we are the highest potential, probably, maybe, only option available for the East Milton Fire Station. We've been told a couple of different things. So it's really important, I think, to support this organization while we try to support the Fire Department at the same time. I urge you to support this. Thank you.
Ms. McAvaney, you have to be recognized.
Margaret McAvaney, newly elected Precinct Three Town Meeting Member and member of the Warrant Committee. Thank you. I'd like to say that I support Mr. Morash 100%. I think the fine men of the Fire Department need to be applauded. They put in so much of their own spare time donating hundreds of hours that they're not being paid for. I took it upon myself, and I visited these fire stations, and the deplorable, I mean, deplorable, conditions our men live in is something that I beg, and women, thank you, all of you to go out and see for yourself. This person just stated, go visit the Milton Arts Center. I ask all of you to go see the conditions that our fine firefighters and women have to live in. I went left there, and I'll tell you, I couldn't sleep. It haunted me for at least a week or so, I kept thinking about this. These men deserve better. They're the ones that put their lives on the line for us every single day. We need to do something about it. This Firespace Needs Committee has been studying this for so long. We have to trust their specialty. We have to trust Steve Morash. I know I do. If he says that they are going to look at other owned property or other property, they will, but I have to ask the members of the Milton Arts Center, where is the money going to come from to purchase these other sites? As it is, we're looking for the two and a half override. Where are we going to get this money? Let's be realistic. Thank you.
Excuse me, sir. This woman, ma'am, would you like to be recognized?
Yes. Yes. Thank you. Hello, I'm Maureen Peterson, Precinct Ten, and I am also on the Milton Arts Center Board of Directors. And I hope it's clear that Arts Center Board, we completely support the Firespace Needs Committee, their efforts, and we definitely want to see improved facilities for our firefighters. And just on Marathon Monday, my daughter had to call 911, and it was such a huge relief when the fire truck arrived within four minutes and the ambulance right behind it, and everyone was fine. But we absolutely support them, and as we know that Steve Morash, they support us as well. I guess it would just be a huge boost to the morale of us at the Arts Center who volunteer our time, and the building is so perfectly suited to the gallery shows and classrooms and outside events. And we are all volunteers, and it, we just, this would give us confidence that all other options would be considered. And I think someone else brought it up, a building project of this size, we're going to have to look into all kinds of funding sources, and I don't think it's unreasonable that part of it would be purchasing land or something along those lines. Thank you.
Sir, you recognized?
Kevin Hardy, Precinct One. I'd like to actually maybe propose something alternative, just because I think if the idea is that, if the idea is that we want to not prohibit the committee looking at places out of town, what if we stop the language after owned by the town, so that we make sure that we're exhausting all of our, where we're looking? But I think it's that last language that's probably, I guess, a little bit, because that is what's hamstringing, I guess, the committee. So if you had just after owned by the town, you're still looking at places in Milton and also places that aren't owned by Milton. So just a potential alternative. I don't know if that's amenable to anyone.
So you're requesting a friendly amendment to the motion as proposed?
Yes, I suppose I'm offering a friendly amendment to the-
To Mr. Danbrook.
Friendly amendment, to stop the language after not currently owned by town.
Mr. Danbrook, do you accept that language? It's just, sir, if you'd go to the mic, just a quick yes or no, if you would, please.
No, no, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So, in that case, sir, the language is not accepted. We have to deal with this first motion on the table before we amend your motion. So if this passes, you could then come back and try to amend the language that would have just passed, if that makes sense. So at the moment, we have the motion on the table to amend as it's up on the screen. Is it? Yes. Okay. Anyone else? Yes. Mr. Frizzetti.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Steve Frizzetti, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Seven, and member of the Board of Cemetery Trustees. I just have a quick question that you might be able to answer. This language may not be necessary. Do you know if, once this newly-appointed board makes their decision on what to do with the firehouses, do we get to then vote on that before anything gets done?
I guess I'll put a process question out. This committee would have to come back and make a recommendation. Planning Board, Board of Selectmen, do you know where this would go? Would it go? Can't hear you, I'm sorry. Mr. Walsh, do you have some clarity here?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. Brian Walsh, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Eight. I think sometimes we get so involved in the verbiage here, in complicated articles, that we lose the forest for the trees. To Mr. Frizzetti's point or question, certainly, especially now it's a moderator-appointed board, that board will come back to the moderator vis-à-vis Town Meeting to make their recommendations. Their recommendations would then have to be approved by Town Meeting. And then, if it's going to be a building, a building project, it's certainly got to approve, be approved by the voters in the town of Milton, whether it's 25 million, 30 million. So I would like everyone to kind of think of the practical realities. The practical realities are, if the building committee, whomever they might be, were to come back and recommend something that was so distasteful to so many members that support, for example, the Milton Arts Center, they probably would not likely be successful. But again, I think, to Mr. Frizzetti's point, yes, this board, appointed by the moderator, would come to this Town Meeting, make their recommendations, it would have to be, it's going to be a recommendation to build something or to reconstruct and refurbish something. Have to be approved here and then approved by the residents. And again, think of it, what building committee would want to recommend a building project that politically would be dead on arrival? I suspect none. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
David Burns, Precinct Two, Board of Selectmen. Regardless of what recommendation this committee makes, the Milton Arts Center still falls under the purview of the Board of Selectmen, so we would still have to vote on that. So, to former moderator's point, we are currently looking at other locations as well. I know members of this board are in full support of the Milton Arts Center as is. So, you know, this committee will do its due diligence, but it will come back before the Board of Selectmen for our final vote on that action. Thank you.
Ma'am, you recognized?
I'm Frank Graham, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Nine. And I just, I don't want to take, I know everybody wants to just vote, but I just want to say, again, it's not arts versus saving lives. We just want to widen the scope a little bit and say, we can look a little bit further. And just to have that language in there, I think will be good for everybody. So I'm in support of the amendment.
Thank you. Ms. Agostino.
Diana Tulio-Agostino, Precinct Nine. I think everybody would be really happy to leave here unified in this article tonight. And I'd like to ask the moderator, and possibly just a change of one word to the proposed amendment up there, where you have "that will not impact," if you change it to "that may not impact the current Milton." And my question for asking if that verbiage, either-or, if the moderator could ask Town Council, because the question was raised, does this language actually prevent us from looking even at that location still or not? So can we have Town Council clarify how he feels that verbiage would impact or not impact, and whether the word "will" or "may" makes a difference? I mean, Town Council might have read the article where some lawyer just won a huge case because there was an extra comma in the sentence. So I'd appreciate Town Council's opinion on this, so we can all leave here tonight united in this very important article.
Mr. Flynn, you recognized?
Mr. Moderator, Town Meeting Members, I want to be sure I understand the question. The question asks if we change the word "will" in "will not impact" to "may not impact," then what? How does that one word change, change if at all? I'm not sure of the last part of the question. If the change is made from "will not" to "may not," then what? What is the question that I'm being asked? Mr. Moderator, through you.
I think what I heard Ms. Agostino say is that if this is adopted, the recommendation would be unable to impact, a recommendation from the Fire Building Committee could not come back with a recommendation that would impact the current Milton Arts Center or any of the surrounding neighborhood. It could not come back with a recommendation to do that. So she's now saying, if you substituted the word "will," I think she's getting with "may," meaning "might." Not, is that the essence of what you're getting at? So that it, it "may not," does that make a difference?
Mr. Moderator, Town Meeting Members, the difference it makes is, instead of making it an absolute finding that it will impact, I'm sorry, that it will not impact. "Will not impact" is an absolute finding. There's not going to impact the current Milton Arts Center. If you change that to "may not impact," it allows for the possibility that it might. So, yes, there is a change. If you change "will not" to "may not," there is a change in the impact of the vote, yes.
So does that mean the committee could come back, to so everyone understands, so I understand, the committee could come back with a recommendation under, by changing the word to "may," that does negatively impact the Milton Arts Center? They may or they may not? Is that correct?
You stated it correctly, sir, yes.
Okay. Given that, offered as a, was that offered as a friendly amendment, Ms. Agostino? Yes? Yes, it was? Mr. Danbrook, do you accept that friendly amendment?
No.
No? Okay. So, we still have to now address this article as it's written up on, this amendment as it's written up on the board, with the language that you see up there. I said, one, yes, and I think we may be at a wrap after this last question.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ellen Dennehyer, Precinct Two. I suggest that we do not support this amendment. I think it's, we're all struggling to understand exactly what it means. Excuse me. I think that the committee and their consultants would struggle with the language. I think that we should rely on the professionals to do their best work and to simultaneously balance the needs of the Fire Department and the Milton Arts Center and the surrounding neighborhood and the town as a whole. And I agree with our previous moderator that no committee is going to come with a proposal that they think would be dead on arrival. So I agree with Mr. Morash. I think this language is too specific. I think we should not support this amendment. I think we should rely on the committee to do good work, which will be marketable to the town, which is what ultimately is going to be needed. Thank you.
At this point, I'm going to call for an opinion of the Warrant Committee on the motion to amend. It's going around. And by the way, when we wrap this, we'll call it a night, I believe, because 25 mile an hour speed limit is just too much fun at 10:45.
The Warrant Committee rejects the motion on the-
The Warrant Committee rejects the motion on the floor.
Okay. So with that, all in favor of approving the motion to amend as written on the screen, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The motion is defeated. So now, we are back to the original motion as amended by two friendly amendments. Can we put, is everyone clear what that is? Do we need to go back up the screen? Are we all good? We're all good? Okay. I'm assuming no one else wants to speak to this motion at this time? In which case, all those in favor of the recommendation as amended, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The motion carries. Two things, folks, again, we're here tomorrow night at 7:30. Someone move to dismiss? All in favor of dismiss? All opposed? See you tomorrow night.